Good afternoon. Let's everybody try and get a seat. Okay. All right, have everybody's attention. Let's everybody take a seat. All right, the March 4th, 2025 special meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. Public comment will be limited to the items on the agenda. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak on the consent calendar, please submit your request to speak from the clerk. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak is called on. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Conrad?
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Present.
Councilmember Euring?
Here.
Mayor Protimbergans?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, Drew, Leonard, would you mind leading us in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on March 3rd, 2025.
All right, may we have an approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, being none of the agenda is approved. All right, we have a consent calendar item we need to take care of here. Do we have any comments on the consent calendar?
We don't have any speaker slips for the consent calendar, I do see we have one raised hand on Zoom, so we'll ask them to unmute now if they have comment on the consent calendar. This is the time to make those comments, if they'd like to speak on the workshop, we'll hear that momentarily.
Parker, can we find out?
Howard Ratsky.
Howard, go ahead, please, is this on the consent calendar item?
So, sorry, I made a mistake.
All right.
Sorry, I made a mistake, I made a mistake, I'll go back when we have.
Okay, very good, all right, let's, we have no other speakers, all right, public comments are closed, anybody want to pull anything on this consent calendar? I assume not, have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, being no opposition, motion is approved, all right, let's move on to. We'll now consider item 2A, this is council members disaster rebuild ordinance workshop. Disaster rebuild ordinance workshop, this is a workshop where we'll open dialogue with the public and will not follow our normal public comment structure. Deputy City Manager Brown, would you explain the process for the workshop, please?
Absolutely, thank you mayor and members of the council, and thank you to those here that have come to the council chambers to participate in today's workshop. I'm going to give a brief overview as to how the format is going to work, and I see those that have already taken their seats. I do want to let you know, as I had indicated, if we hit a certain number of members of the public that were joining us, we're going to break apart this very large table here into two different groups, so we are going to end up doing that just as I finish giving that project overview. We'll do that as our planning staff, Principal Planner Tyler Eaton will give an overview of what we're here to discuss, so just bear with us a bit. As we go through the workshop today, we're going to go in order of first, the local coastal program amendments, changes proposed, and then we will move to the Malibu municipal code changes that will be proposed. We have broken each of these into sections, each are timed, we will have three groups, two groups in person, one will be our virtual attendees that we have on Zoom, you will be your own breakout group. As we go through, we will provide an overview section by section, the section overview is what is to be discussed within the breakout groups, it will be a focused and hopefully robust dialogue between everyone that's come here, we're very excited to get the feedback and make sure that we all have understanding of what these amendments are proposed to be. As we make our way, each discussion will be timed so we can have focused productive dialogue. Within each group, there will be a reporter and we'll say a scribe, if you're familiar with community workshops. At the end of the timed group discussion, we will then hear out from the groups, the reporter will talk about what was discussed and what is proposed, we need to make sure we capture all of that on audio, and just as you may have been familiar with at camp, if you have the roaming mic, that is the talking stick, we, so that is your turn to talk, and we ask that you all be respectful of each other as we navigate through this process. This is your chance to ask questions, we have our city staff here that's going to be participating as well, we have our city attorney, and so we're very much looking forward to this conversation. So, all I ask is for some grace, trust the process, and we will get through this together.
All right, thank you, is Tyler going to do a presentation?
Mayor, have a quick, just take.
We do have a couple of quick announcements as Tyler is getting set up here. Return, right of entry forms, those are due by March 31st, the Corps of Engineers is actually in the lobby, or they may be in the back, back there, if you have any questions about right of entry forms, this is the time to do it while you're here this afternoon. Also, I want to make one statement to kind of clarify things, the actual LCP and the MMC, Local Coastal Plan, Malibu Municipal Code, these are like the basketball game rules. We've seen a lot of information sent to the council members about things that are probably in more detail about how the game is played, the plays in the game as opposed to the rules of the game, I don't mean to say it's a game, but just so that you understand it, that it's about ones, operations as opposed to process, if you want to see it that way. So, please understand that while you may have a specific question about your particular site, that's not what we're covering here, we're trying to set up the rules that the city will operate under for disaster such as we're dealing with here, on changes to the Malibu Municipal Code and the local coastal plan to facilitate that. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tyler.
Oh. Oh, Steve.
And I'd just like to add on to what the mayor just said, the beach properties, if you know people on the beach property who haven't put in the right of entry, please contact, we need to clean up that beach, I mean, this is causing all sorts of environmental problems, and the Corps is ready and willing, if we can get a lot of right of entry forms filled out, they can go in there and do, you know, hit all the properties at one time and clean them up much quicker, and I think that's something that if you live in Malibu, you should understand, I mean, we have got to protect that ocean and our environment, so, you know, if you know your friends who haven't turned them in, give a call, talk to them, squeeze them, push them, whatever you have to do, but let's get those forms in so we can get this thing cleaned up, thank you.
First, go ahead.
Guys, a quick process question, are we going to be doing anything up here beyond watching the presentation now and then breaking down, because if we are, I'd like to just go sit at the table?
Yeah, we're sitting at the table, right, we're going down.
We are, okay. Yes, council will be adjourning from the dais down to the tables, we do need to break the tables apart, so following the presentation from staff, we would invite the council to situate at that time, is what we would recommend.
And does anybody else have any comments, all right.
Yeah, I was actually asking about during the presentation, we're going to sit up here for the presentation, we can't just go sit with everybody else?
If you would like to wait for us to rearrange the furniture before the presentation starts, we could have the council seated on the floor, but we will need to move the furniture, so there's enough seats for everyone.
It's okay, we'll draw the request.
Okay, Tyler, go ahead, please.
Been the mic on?
Mayor and council members, I just really appreciate the opportunity, thanks for hosting us here today, Colonel Brian Saucer, Commander of the Emergency Field Office for the Palisades Impact Area, which includes Pacific Palisades, unincorporated areas in the city of Malibu. So, just want to invite anyone that does have any questions about rights of entry, phase two process, what does debris removal look like when it's performed by the Corps of Engineers, we're happy to answer any of those questions. Many of you know we've done one property not too far away from here, in between Ramblaw Pacifico and Ramblaw Vista, we're doing a second property today, and you're also going to see, starting when you wake up Friday morning, there's going to be a construction zone that's built out there, really surge on the 60 parcels that are in that stretch, as it stands right now, to the point, I do appreciate that, the more ROEs that we receive, we can do that in bulk, as you can imagine, when we get them in bulk, it's much more efficient, because you can move linearly, instead of doing one property, picking up, coming off the property, and then moving further down the road, so the more efficiencies we gain, we appreciate it, we do have our friends from Tetra Tech that work for the county, they work for LA County Public Works, but there's, that's a portion of the team that is working on these ROEs, so you actually have human beings in the Malibu City Hall every day here to assist folks face to face, if you prefer that. It can get complicated, it is very, you know, there's a lot of legal documents that are involved, I think that the personal interactions help a lot, because you can answer the questions in real time and sometimes produce documents in real time, and it just moves along a little bit quicker, appreciate the opportunity, we'll be here afterwards in the crowd, and then also out in the lobby as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Colonel.
I have a quick question, I was told that there are some residents on the beach that are not, we're not able to get a hold of them for ROEs, they might be in an LLC or foreign, and if they don't clear their debris, or they don't act, that will hold us up, is that right?
It won't hold, I mean, certainly it won't hold up cleaning that particular parcel, it doesn't hold up the city of Malibu, I mean, we're going to still move forward regardless if we have that parcel or not, to that point, I do know the county, working with the city of Malibu, they are looking at an end date for when folks have to address the opt-out or the indecision period, and that's being handled outside of the Corps, but it would not slow things down in Malibu.
And for the city of Malibu, have we been able to do, are we doing outreach to some of those owners, if they haven't contacted us to, I know that there's a lot of LLCs on the beach?
We are contacting all of our homeowners, we are also sending a blast email to all of our families, we are also putting it on social media, we are also working with our supervisor Horvath's office, Colonel is going to do a video, we'll post it on our social media, it will also be on KBO, so we are trying to do as much outreach for that community.
Thank you so much.
And the deadline is March 31st, I have those ROEs in, correct?
That's correct, mayor.
All right.
One more question, Tyler, is the written presentation we're going to receive now, that you're going to make, is that going to be the same tomorrow, or when we, when we actually work on the?
We're going to work on it tonight.
Is it going to be the same presentation you're going to make when we take, when we open the public hearing?
To use Acting City Manager's term, it's, the next one's going to be in a bridge version of this one.
Okay, I would, I would like to request a copy of the PowerPoint that I can have in front of me, as well as if there's going to be a different one later, the one that's going to, we're going to have later, I've actually asked for that many times over the course of the year or two, and just don't seem to ever get them.
Understood, Councilmember Silverstein, we'll be able to get you one for the record, but also you have to know, sometimes we are still finalizing presentations right up to before because of new information, so we don't always have it available in time.
Okay, well, in any event, I'd like to get it before we actually start deliberating on what we're doing here.
Can you wait till, let's wait, let's wait. Let's still wait till later. All right. Tyler, the third time's the charm, go ahead.
Sorry, mayor, and thank you, mayor and council members, we're getting you in updated, we added a few more slides last minute, a lot of this stuff has been very to the wire, by the way, I just want to start by saying, I'm getting a lot of emails, I haven't forgot about you, I've been super swamped with this, and I'm going to get to you, just wanted to make sure that was clear, I didn't forget about you. We have some upcoming meetings I want to share with people, so Monday is a big event, we have, on March 10th, we have a rebuild center, our one-stop shop opening just across the way here. On March 12th, Wednesday, next Wednesday, at 4:00 PM, we have our Design Professionals Workshop, some of the nitty-gritty that the mayor discussed, it's a good time to have those discussions. From 3:18 and every following Tuesday at 4:00 PM, we're going to have Neighborhood Focus Meetings on 3:18, we have a Franklin Fire Meeting, haven't forgot about y'all, and on 3:20, we have Southern California Edison Town Hall. I also want to share, you know, please come see us, regardless of what happens today, we're open for business, we're taking in applications, our rebuild, our upstairs operations are open from 8:00 to 3:00, like I said, we're going to have that rebuild center, you don't have to wait for that, even though it's just next Monday. But come in today, we approved our first planning verification already up on those floors, so I know, you know, I know there's a lot of things being said, you know, the staff, we don't, we don't get paid to play the politics, we get paid to help you out, so come see us, and we'll do just that. All right, so, getting into the details, we have the Governor's Executive Order, which is kind of the framework for this. So, the Governor's Executive Order, and I'm going to probably say this a lot tonight and moving forward, the Governor's Executive Order is only for the Palisades Fire, so we got to remember that, so, one of our goals in the LCP amendment is to also have some similar allowances for people not affected by the Palisades Fire, but if you're affected by the Palisades Fire, you fall within this Governor's Order, the LCP is basically suspended if you don't want to use it. There's a couple, there's a couple issues that you may want to use, a couple tools, I would say, in the de minimis waiver category that we'll get to, that you can use if you're in the Palisades Fire, but if you don't need to use the LCP in any capacity for your Palisades Fire rebuild, you don't have to, so I just want to make sure that's very clear, I think there's a lot of, you know, uncertainty about that. What I want to also say is that the Governor's Order didn't just say, go ahead and build whatever you want, you have to stay within certain parameters, and those parameters are listed here, your structure has to be substantially in the same location, it can't exceed 110% the footprint in height, new ADUs are going to be allowed, or suspended from the Coastal Act in Sequa on those properties in the Palisades Fire, and some other supportive infrastructure was allowed. Another big thing is that the city has full authority to determine what falls into this suspension, into this Governor's Order, so we don't need to get coastal involved at all to make our determinations, which is, which is good, and there's some other suspensions in there about the building code, health and safety code. So, I'll just be quick on this, for those that don't know, we have a local coastal program, we have Malibu Municipal Code, we have two codes that basically are the law of the land in terms of land use, and our local coastal program, again, this is for people not in the Palisades Fire, so when you see stuff for, under the local coastal program tonight, it is not for the Palisades Fire, there's two tools, again, that you'll be able to use for the Palisades Fire, but you're totally suspended from the LCP if you're in the Palisades Fire. This is for our Franklin Fire folks, this is for our Woolsey Fire folks, this is for our Broad Fire folks, and all the others that have been affected by fires in the city. The Malibu Municipal Code is going to be the law of the land for the Palisades Fire and everyone else as well, so that's the code that Palisades Fire will be governed by. All right, some distinct differences between Franklin Fire, Woolsey, Broad versus Palisades. We have our existing LCP language that talks about floor area height and bulk, that's in the current local coastal program, the Palisades Fire, the Governor's exemption, just says footprint and height. We have the Governor's Order, in the Palisades Fire, we don't have the Governor's Order.
Tyler, the third time's the charm. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor and council members. We're getting you in updated. We added a few more slides last minute. A lot of this stuff has been very to the wire. By the way, I just want to start by saying I'm getting a lot of emails. I haven't forgot about you. I've been super swamped with this and I'm going to get to you. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. I didn't forget about you. We have some upcoming meetings I want to share with people. So Monday is a big event. We have, on March 10th, we have a rebuild center, our one stop shop opening just across the way here. On March 12th, Wednesday, next Wednesday at 4:00 PM, we have our Design Professionals Workshop, some of the nitty gritty that the mayor discussed. It's a good time to have those discussions. From 3:18 and every following Tuesday at 4:00 PM, we're going to have Neighborhood Focus Meetings on 3:18. We have a Franklin Fire meeting. Haven't forgot about y'all. And on 3:20, we have Southern California Edison Town Hall. I also want to share, you know, please come see us. Regardless of what happens today, we're open for business. We're taking in applications. Our rebuild, our upstairs operations are open from 8:00 to 3:00. Like I said, we're going to have that rebuild center. You don't have to wait for that, even though it's just next Monday. But come in today. We approved our first planning verification already up on those floors. So I know, you know, I know there's a lot of things being said. You know, the staff, we don't get paid to play the politics. We get paid to help you out. So come see us and we'll do just that. All right, so getting into the details. We have the Governor's Executive Order, which is kind of the framework for this. So the Governor's Executive Order, and I'm going to probably say this a lot tonight and moving forward, the Governor's Executive Order is only for the Palisades Fire. So we got to remember that. So one of our goals in the LCP Amendment is to also have some similar allowances for people not affected by the Palisades Fire. But if you're affected by the Palisades Fire, you fall within this Governor's Order. The LCP is basically suspended if you don't want to use it. There's a couple, there's a couple issues that you may want to use, a couple tools, I would say, in the de minimis waiver category that we'll get to that you can use if you're in the Palisades Fire. But if you don't need to use the LCP in any capacity for your Palisades Fire rebuild, you don't have to. So I just want to make sure that's very clear. I think there's a lot of, you know, uncertainty about that. What I want to also say is that the Governor's Order didn't just say, go ahead and build whatever you want. You have to stay within certain parameters. And those parameters are listed here. Your structure has to be substantially in the same location. It can't exceed 110% the footprint and height. New ADUs are going to be allowed or suspended from the Coastal Act and SEQA on those properties in the Palisades Fire. And some other supportive infrastructure was allowed. Another big thing is that the city has full authority to determine what falls into this suspension, into this Governor's Order. So we don't need to get coastal involved at all to make our determinations, which is good. And there's some other suspensions in there about the building code, health and safety code. So I'll just be quick on this. For those that don't know, we have a local coastal program. We have Malibu Municipal Code. We have two codes that basically are the law of the land in terms of land use. And our local coastal program, again, this is for people not in the Palisades Fire. So when you see stuff for, under the local coastal program tonight, it is not for the Palisades Fire. There's two tools, again, that you'll be able to use for the Palisades Fire, but you're totally suspended from the LCP if you're in the Palisades Fire. This is for our Franklin Fire folks. This is for our Woolsey Fire folks. This is for our Broad Fire folks and all the others that have been affected by fires in the city. The Malibu Municipal Code is going to be the law of the land for the Palisades Fire and everyone else as well. So that's the code that Palisades Fire will be governed by. All right. Some distinct differences between Franklin Fire, Woolsey, Broad versus Palisades. We have our existing LCP language that talks about floor area height and bulk. That's in the current local coastal program. The Palisades Fire, the Governor's Exemption, just says footprint and height. We have the Governor's Order in the Palisades Fire. We don't have the Governor's Order in the Franklin, Broad and Woolsey Fire. So again, if you're Franklin, Broad or Woolsey, both codes apply, the LCP and MMC. And here it is, I have a ticker. It's my fifth time. The LCP does not apply to the Palisades Fire unless you want to use one of those tools. Okay, so primary development area footprint. Why do we, why do we create this? As you'll see, as we go through this, there's, this is a new definition we had to create to allow you to rebuild what some people would say your building pad. I think that's a fair argument. We wanted to expand it to development area because we think that's a wider range, not just your building pad. So this definition kind of keeps you in a box, which was all your previous development. You're allowed to kind of build all the stuff within that box, let's say. And I have a couple exhibits for you. Uh oh. Let me wait for it to come back up because it is critical. Okay. Okay, so primary development footprint area, what does that actually look like? This is a beachfront property. So your, your planning verification, your home that gets rebuilt has to go back in the same building footprint or substantially the same for the Governor's Order, right? That's the yellow thing. That's that house. You have to build substantially in that same location, your building. But your primary development area footprint is your decks, your, you know, your driveways, your front yard, degraded areas all around your property. And as you'll see, a lot of these accessory structures, you'll be able to kind of put all up in your primary development footprint area. Your building has to go back in substantially the same footprint. So here I have a representation, you know, just showing an OWTS that was in the front. This is not real, but just to give you an idea. Using these codes, you can put the OWTS in the front of your property because it's still within your primary development footprint area. Primary development area footprint. Now let's take a non-beachfront property. Same thing. We have the home. The home has to be sited substantially in the same location. But we have your primary development area footprint, which includes the pool, your backyard, your driveway, your front yard. And those you can, you can shift around your OWTS. If it was in the front, you could put it in the back. And, you know, we have some requirements if you're on the ocean that you're going to have to put in the most landward feasible. But just to give you guys an idea, whereas this property has a secondary development area footprint for an accessory structure closer to the ocean there. That's not included in this definition. The accessory structure should stay on your primary development area footprint. Okay, so temporary homes. I'm just going to show between Woolsey and, I'm sorry, not Woolsey, but Local Coastal Program and Malibu Municipal Code, Woolsey Fire, Franklin Broad. In the Local Coastal Program, Palisades Fire and the Malibu Municipal Code, what are the changes we're proposing? We're requesting or we're proposing to go to 1,000 square feet just to match the current ADU law that allows 1,000 square feet just in case you want to convert your temporary home at a later time to an ADU. It's just so you don't buy something that you can't permit as permanent down the line. We have some proposals to up the fines. There were some bad players, if you will, during Woolsey. And we think the fines should be raised for those bad players. We are going to make it so that only, you know, it's what it's intended for. And those who were living on the property or who owned the property at the time of the fire, they're the ones that can use a temporary home not to turn it into some short term rental opportunity. There is a limited geotechnical proposed report just for safety. So to make sure that if you're in a post-fire debris flow area, that you're just, you're putting it in a safe location. And it must show compliance with the building code if it's not on wheels. And if it is on wheels, this was a planning commission recommendation that it must be fastened to the ground. Okay. So going into our local coastal program, CDP exemptions. As you've seen in your document, hopefully, we have, we have the blue text, which is what the Planning Commission proposed. And we have the purple text, which is some additional staff recommendations following, following some discussions we had with the Coastal Commission staff. So the Planning Commission, this is for, again, not for Palisades Fire. You don't need to use this exemption. This is for all other fires, Woolsey, Broad, Franklin, et cetera. You would, in order to rebuild your home with your planning verification, you need first to meet this coastal development permit exemption criteria. So one, it is the same use, right? That's not changing. The Planning Commission asks that we mimic the, the Governor's Order language of footprint and height in the local coastal program. Staff's recommendation is just to keep it how it is. I'll let the council decide what is best. And I have some exhibits as to why it's probably best to keep floor area height and bulk in staff's opinion. And then we added substantially to more mimic the Governor's Order instead. So if you see before it said you had to be sited in the exact same location, now we're saying substantially to mimic the Governor's Order to give you more leeway to move your rebuild, you know, around your property. So what does that look like? So this is the footprint and height versus the floor area height and bulk argument. So the one to the left, we have your pre-fire home. And sorry for my drawings. We have, on the right, we have your post-fire increases for your 10%. So we have the 10% footprint shown on the very right there and you're expanding laterally. And then we have your 10% height going vertically. Without that third dimension, without that bulk dimension, what essentially could happen, and we've seen this happen, is that you have massing, you have additional massing that may not needed to meet the intent. You're still getting your 10% floor area, still getting your 10% addition in height. But without that extra third dimension layer of bulk, there's an extra massing that could be in your neighbor's view that was never there before. And so I know I heard a lot about this argument. I just want to say, from the staff's perspective, we're looking out for the community. We're not trying to help you get back into your home, but we plan for the community. And so that is why our suggestion is to keep the bulk in there because it just further protects views for your neighbor. All right, so footprint and height versus floor area height or bulk, what does that look like? So if we, if we actually put footprint in that 10% limitation, it actually has negative effects. So here on the left, we have your pre-fire footprint. And there on the right would be the maximum you'd be allowed to move if we put footprint and limited it to a 10% outside your footprint. Whereas if we use the term substantially, maybe we have more wiggle room, right? Now you can, substantially could mean you could go 50% outside your original footprint. And that may be better for you or meet the intent of what you wanted. So I just wanted to point that out. So more Local Coastal Program Amendment, CDP exemptions that we're proposing and that the Coastal Commission, to this point, the Coastal Commission staff has agreed to. Mechanized equipment on the beach is going to be exempt from the CDP. This is a big one. This is definitely a big one for, for those who were affected in the Woolsey Fire. If your onsite wastewater treatment system can be moved to a location within your primary development area footprint, it is now exempt as proposed. Not a DMW. There is a DMW you can still get if you have to go outside the primary development area footprint. But this is an exemption that the Coastal Commission staff agreed to. So it's better because you're not even in the de minimis category. So speaking of those de minimis waivers, as I mentioned before, if your OWTS has to go outside your primary development area footprint, then you would need a DMW. Improvements to your driveways, still need a DMW as they did before. But what we've proposed to add, and this is, a lot of Woolsey residents can, can relate to this. We're exempt or we're waiving development on slopes steeper than three to one. And we're allowing you to do six foot tall walls up to nine feet if it's a replacement wall. So those are some of the things that trip people up in Woolsey. They got, they proposed their DMW, but they were cutting into steep slopes. And so now they had to get a full CDP with a variance. Now that same person will be able to process their full application in their de minimis waiver as proposed. Replacement seawalls needed to protect an OWTS. If you recall, during the Planning Commission, we proposed new seawalls needed for OWTS in the de minimis waiver category. That was, there was, you know, some back and forth with the Coastal Commission. And we settled on at least replacement walls can be, replacement seawalls can be used in a de minimis waiver. All right, so the next two are highlighted for a reason. And that reason is that these two are those tools that I mentioned that Palisades Fire residents might want to use to help them rebuild. And this, this is a debatable topic, I should say, this FEMA issue. Some call it, some call it increase in height. Some call it no increase in height, just depending on where you measure zero from. And I understand that, and I'm going to demonstrate that visually for you in a sec. But we're proposing that height beyond 10% for beachfront lots needed to meet the FEMA requirements are in the de minimis waiver category. And relocation structures, if you're in a geological hazard area, if you need to move it in a safer location, that is also a de minimis waiver option that Palisades Fire residents can use. Okay, so I just mentioned that. And what does this look like visually? So I want to shout out Luis Tenya for allowing me to use his building design. I added some stick figures to it to demonstrate what I'm trying to say here. So the original house in this exhibit was outlined in black there. And it was only 10 feet above the ocean. But in this exhibit, they're required to go up to 20 feet above sea level to meet the FEMA requirements. And that's the red box is what their new house would look like. So you can move the base up. That's fine if the council decides to interpret it that way. From the eye of the beholder, the person across the street, at the end of the day, they're seeing a obstruction in their view higher than what was there before. So that's why we categorize it as height because that's how we measure it. If we want to take a different approach, we can talk about it. But I just wanted to be clear that no matter what you call it, the person across the street has this impact. And I was asked to look at how many residents are we talking about here? Just in this strip of Rambla Pacifico, this is about 30, 35 homes that are just across the street from beachfront homes. So I just wanted to give the council a visual of, you know, how many approximately we're talking about. There's more too, but just to give you a snapshot. So those dots represent existing primary view determinations that we have on file. And I'm going to show you some views of what that looks like. So this is on Rambla Pacifico, Rambla Vista. These are two from Rambla Vista area where you could see that, you know, PVD is on file. There's, the one to the left anyway, has not much ocean view left. And, you know, a slight increase in their home for if that, if that property needed to be rebuilt could result in maybe a complete loss of, of views for this resident. Same with the right. You can see that, you know, lifting those homes up could result in some impacts. So I wanted just to show this. This is the FEMA flood map that's available online for everyone's consumption. It's a GIS map. And this is in that same area, just to give people an idea. So here, the FEMA flood elevation is 18 feet above sea level. So if there's a person or a house, a previous house that was only 14 feet above sea level, they need to be one foot above that 18 feet in their new design. So they're going to have to come up five feet. So five feet to some of these folks could be a big deal. I was asked to, this is a carbon beach photo, by the way. I was asked to come up with some languages that can maybe help this situation. We understand, we want to get you back in your homes. And this, you may, you know, FEMA being a federal requirement, you may have no option. So we want to, we want to get you back in your homes. We also want to help your neighbors as much as possible protect their ocean views because it's so important to their property values. So we're recommending some additional language that's not in your packet. And this would be added to the Malibu Municipal Code to just try to, you know, preserve views as much as possible. So this is in the planning verification section. And we're just adding a subsection one, which would be that replacement structures on beachfront lots that are allowed to meet the minimum increases necessary to meet the FEMA requirements are allowed, but shall, to the maximum extent feasible, protect neighboring blue water views. Replacement structures shall seek increases in floor area laterally before they are allowed to increase vertically as viewed by neighboring properties. So what does that look like? Go back to our cool little design we got here. So before you go just vertically up, which is option two there, we want you to try to explore going laterally. So that's option one to the left. So if you, if you have room, and not a lot of beachfront properties, to be fair, are going to have the room, but there may be some that do. And if you do, we're asking that you, you try to expand your 10% laterally before you expand vertically. And by doing that, you will help preserve your neighbors' views. So we're making a requirement to just look into it. If the option is not on the table, if option one is not an option for you to get back what you had, then option two would be, would be given to you at that point. All right. So we talked about the first one, height. Let's talk about relocation and replacement structures outside the footprint. What does that look like? So on the bottom, we have our original footprint in blue. And we have topo lines, if you're familiar with those, those red lines going across. That's your bluff, right? In this case, the, this resident is pretty close to the bluff. So they wanted to, at the very minimum, move 50% outside their footprint. They're allowed to do that with the substantial location language we added. However, you know, it's still not that safe to me. I need to be as far as I can away from the bluff, completely outside my original footprint. That DMW will allow you to go, you know, well beyond your original footprint. There's some findings we have to make. Okay, so ADUs. The Governor's Order, and this is now really in the Palisades Fire weed. So the Governor's Order allows you to rebuild, to place a new ADU on your property. And it's completely suspended from the Coastal Act and SEQA. So that means our MMC will reign in terms of the planning law. So you'll need an administrative plan review. It's a, we're proposing to do 1,000 universal instead of what we had, which was 850, 850 for a one bedroom and 1,000 for a two bedroom. We're just going to say 1,000 no matter what. And council, this was a planning commission recommendation. The council can consider eliminating the 20 foot wide street with requirement if they want to make it a little easier for some folks. I should tell you that there's still building code requirements you're going to have to meet. So it's not like, you know, you get through planning and, you know, you're going to have a permit. Just want to make that, make sure that's clear. Excuse me. So showing ADUs, what the comparison between Local Coastal Program, Malibu Municipal Code. Again, no Governor's Order in the Local Coastal Program, but Malibu Municipal Code has it, 1,000 square feet in each one. If you, if you're in the Franklin, Broad or Woolsey Fire and you want to propose a detached ADU, the executive order does not cover you. So you still need a CDP. If you're in the Palisades Fire, you can fall outside the LCP into the MMC and Chapter 17.44 is what's going to govern you. And this is detached, attached conversions, just need to meet the MMC. View preservation, we have some proposed language here. It's just a cleanup item, really. I don't want to spend too much time, but we can come back to it. Our landscaping ordinance was reviewed by the Los Angeles County Fire Department. Shout out to them. That was a huge help and their willingness to help. Thank you. So we made some changes since the planning commission meeting based on the recommendation. We had that Zone Zero in there originally for the planning commission. But the, the fire chief we talked to said that it's likely when this goes before the state. And by the way, Zone Zero is not even approved at the state level. So we would be ahead of the ball in terms of this. They said that turf grass may be allowed between two and five feet. So I just had it in there for So I just had it in there for the council's consideration. You may want to be more strict, it's up to you, and say nothing's allowed, but I'm going to leave it up to you. They said it's probable that at the state level, they're going to at least allow that between two and five. No tree canopies can be within five feet of your structure. That's a new. And then per some of the recommendations, because they thought we were being too strict, we just went as strict as possible and wanted someone to tell us, to tell us we were too strict, and they did. So only, instead of low growing plants between five and 30 feet, you're allowed to have trees and shrubs. But again, you have to keep that five-foot tree canopy distance from your structure. We're going to require irrigation. We're proposing to require irrigation between five and 100 feet. That would be Zones A and B of your fuel modification plan. We're going to, we propose now to strike the only natives requirement. Again, just don't want to be too restrictive. We don't need to. It's all about fire safety. If the fire safety people are telling us that's not necessary, you know, we want to give that to our residents as well. Invasive species list is still prohibited, and your non-contiguous mulch areas shall be separated with non-flammable materials. Non-conforming uses in structures. So this is a critical chapter for a lot of folks. This is in the Malibu Municipal Code. This is what gives you your planning verification for a rebuild plus 10% or 110%, whatever you want to call. This is, this is for every fire, including the Palisades. We just clarified some language that the applications need to be submitted. First, we made sure all fires get this planning verification privilege, and it wasn't just Woolsey as it was written before. We clarified that the applications need to be submitted within six years, and building permits secured in eight years. Just cleared that up because there was some, some issues with that. And then the planning commission can grant additional three years of extensions to those six and eight-year deadlines. And then we cleaned up that, this was what it was always intended to be, but we added that it's really non-beachfront properties over 18 feet need a site plan review. It was, the non-beachfront part was not in the original language. So, so this is the language I mentioned before, just as a reminder to the council, as adding to that subsection for, for planning verification. If you want to add the FEMA stuff to the, if you determine that FEMA issue is within the governor's order, we do need to have it listed in the MMC so that we make sure people can still get a PVD and fits all the rules. Sorry, P, planning verification and fits all the rules. Almost done here, bear with me. So development permits. This is a new mechanism that we've, we were proposing to create. And the reason being is, again, when you're in the Palisades Fire, you do not have to apply to the LCP. So that means that you don't have to apply for any of those de minimis waivers. All we had to do in the municipal code is recreate, create a mechanism for you to get those same structures that you would have under a de minimis waiver. Now it's a lot easier for you because of those governor's orders. So same structures, driveway widening. We're going to allow new sea walls because we want you to protect your OWTS on the beach. The only thing we were going to say is that someone who takes advantage of the relocation DMW option will also need a site plan review if you have a height above 18 feet, and that's, again, to protect your neighbors. More things that can be added as a, under a rebuild development permit. OWTS, mechanized equipment on the beach, new structures needed to meet building and fire code, and some driveway widening, as I mentioned. Rebuild development permits are going to be similar to a planning verification. And I'm going to, I'm going to get to that real quick here. Let me just kind of skip to that slide. So I heard people say, why can't we just do everything under a planning verification? Well, the planning verification by definition is for replacement structures. So if you're building something new, you can't, it doesn't, doesn't meet the definition of a planning verification. So your home will be, this is for the Palisades Fire. Your home will be approved under a planning verification, and you'll have a subsequent set of rebuild development permits for the various structures you will need that will be just a part of your planning verification application. So your planning verification is your primary project, and these rebuild development permits are just subsequent applications for all the various structures you'll need. If you're in all the other fires, not in Palisades, it's the same thing, except for, as we mentioned, you're going to need all those de minimis waivers. A lot of architects in this building, I can see, will say, you know, they didn't like that process. It's better than a CDP, I think we can all agree. But unfortunately, they don't, all other fires don't have the governor's order, so you still need to get your planning verification and then subsequent de minimis waivers for all those structures. Couple more slides. Frequently asked questions, I heard. I just want to get some information out to the public. I heard that I have my assessor's record, but somebody was telling me that it's not enough. Well, if your assessor's record has your building footprint and it has the square footage you want listed on that, it is enough. So that's your proof. From that point, come design your plans. If you're unsure, come talk to us at City Hall, and we'll help you out. But I heard someone say that there was some rumor going around that that wasn't enough. If your assessor record shows the square footage that you lost completely, it is enough. Can I go from a slope roof to a flat roof? Yes, as long as you're within that 10% height, bulk, et cetera, unless the council changes that. Can I get my non-conforming conditions back? Yes. The planning verification thing I mentioned is strategically placed in a non-conforming structure part of the code. So it allows you to replace your non-conforming structures back to exactly how they were. If you have, you know, we only allow 28 feet as a max in Malibu. If your home was 35 feet, we'll let you get your 35 feet back. Might not let you go taller than that unless it's a FEMA situation, but we'll let you get your 35 feet back. Now those extra bulk areas, if, as proposed, we may say that's not going to fly as long as all the rest stays within 35 feet. And again, can I apply for my application now? Answer is yes. Some further action that the council may consider taking after even these code amendments. There are some things that we just couldn't cover in this, these code amendments. And there may want to be a policy document that the council wants to initiate to help further guide developments and provide some clarification on certain issues. One thing we've heard from a couple residents is they're very close to having their administrative plan reviews done, and then they lost their homes. Is there any wiggle room for that? We're going to have to flesh that out. And then if you want to, if you, if you make the determination that FEMA is part of the governor's order, meaning it's suspended from the LCP, you might want further guidelines to make sure that issue is done fairly for everyone. We have the code, but you may want to just make sure there's a policy document out there specifically for the Palisades Fire. Okay. I think I can wait on this, right, Trevor? Because this is for the meeting. This is our latest last-minute Coastal Commission staff recommendations. Should I wait on this?
If the purpose of that is just to show the small technical changes that are made to that, and you want to make sure that's in the, if we do go to introduction today, then you don't need to share it now. If you want to share any substantive changes from it, from the previous version, you can just describe them here.
That's fair. I'll go quick. So in the last kind of minute deliberations we had with Coastal Commission staff, they wanted to add a few things to our de minimis waiver. And remember that you may not need a de minimis waiver if you're in the Palisades Fire, because it's part of the LCP. There was, before, to get into de minimis waiver, you had to make a finding that you were not in the appeal zone of the Coastal Commission. And as we know, the entire coastline is in the appeal jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission. And so they were willing to get rid of that finding so that we can put things in the appeal zone in the de minimis waiver category. But there's some parameters that they're requesting we place. And that is, if your development is in the appeal jurisdiction, that, that decision from the planning director is appealable to the Coastal Commission and directly to the Coastal Commission. You don't have to go to city council, don't have to go to planning commission. You can go directly to the Coastal Commission, who will make a determination if the planning director's decision was, was not valid. And with that, like I said, we're, we're then proposed to eliminate that unnecessary finding. And lastly, they wanted, this is just further clarifies what I just said about the appealability if you're in the appeal zone and you have a de minimis waiver. So that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tyler. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, what we'll do now is, I would say this is the opportunity to take a quick stretch, your legs, take a break. Staff is going to need to reconfigure the tables. As you can see, we've had quite a few people join us here in chambers, and we want everyone to get an opportunity to participate in the work session. So we will be dividing that. So if I could ask everyone that's currently seated to please stand up and move out of the area. Our staff is going to do that also. Council, if I can ask you among yourselves to decide, it will be two council members at one section, two council members at a second section, and one that will be the virtual workshop. Who would like to be virtual? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You will be virtual.
All right, and who's supposed to be at the table?
So if I can have everybody's attention real quick. At the table is the--
Hold on. Hold on. Quiet, hold on.
So as we break apart the tables, in working group one will be two members of the city council. We will have members of our planning team as well able to answer questions. And then amount of the public to participate in that. Same to be said and repeated for working group number two. Our city attorney will be a roaming city attorney for any legal questions and needing to give some expert legal opinion there. That is who will be at each of these tables. As you congregate after we finish the setup, I will ask the public to determine who will be the scribe and who will be the reporter.
And what's the qualifications to be at the table? Anyone or just professionals? Everybody's--
Everybody is at the table.
All right. That wants to be at the table.
That wants to be at the table. I will say, for those of you that are not looking to necessarily participate, in order to participate in the discussion, you do need to come to the table. Meaning if you're in the back of the room and wanted to chime in, we won't be able to take those comments in for consideration and discussion. You need to be a part of these groups that we're establishing right now.
This is for the workshop? All right, thank you. Thank you.
In case -- can you not hear me? How about now? Any better? Okay, great. Thank you all so much for your flexibility and understanding. So for our first topic, as I mentioned before, in case you joined a little bit late, Tyler did a wonderful presentation overview. But if you're like me, and that might have been a little bit more of word salad and we need to take it chunk by chunk, now this is what we're about to do. So for the first section, section one, we are going to go through the primary development area. I'm going to ask Tyler to repeat himself just for this section. So again, that's the primary development area. We are doing local coastal program amendments first. And Tyler, please take it away. After Tyler gives that overview, I will start the timer and we will start the group discussion.
Thank you, Alexis. So the definition is primary development area footprint. And the definition we currently have, it's in your packets there. It's the main building pad or development area which supported the primary building and which the principal use of the lot was situated or conducted as distinguished from the secondary building pad or development area that is not attached to the main building pad or development area. Please give me feedback if it's too much words. For purposes of properties that were damaged or destroyed by a natural disaster, for beachfront lots, decks that were attached to the primary building shall be included in that primary development area footprint if replaced with another deck. So if it's not clear to you what that means, or just let us know.
Okay. So for those of you that are already, I see, raising hands and have questions, this is the time your table now has the conversation. So I'm going to go ahead and we'll start. And so start having the discussion among yourselves. It's a free-flowing conversation, not handing the mic. This part of the session is not recorded. What is recorded is at the end of the group discussion. And again, this is where the reporter at your table comes in. Will report out the consensus of what the dialogue was on this particular topic so everyone in the room can understand what was discussed. There you go.
Just for you guys' knowledge too, we have a visual up there if you need help kind of visualizing what the definition means.
development area. So if there's any amendments or suggested changes to this portion, we want to make sure your scribe captures that. And then we'll be moving on to the next section. Again, we're covering everything, so don't feel like we're leaving something out. Quick two-minute warning, two-minute warning. So if there's any amendments to this portion, we're going to then have the report out from each group before we move on to the next section. Again, this is just for the primary development area footprint. All right, folks. So we're going to wrap up the group discussion on the primary development area footprint language. I'm going to ask the reporters in each of the groups here, that includes our virtual teams as well. Do we have any volunteers from our in-house group to go first? Okay, I'm going to bring you the mic. It's again, it's like the talking stick. You only get to talk if you have that. Okay. So as you, so to report out, if you'll report out a summary of what the group discussed and if there's amendments or clarification questions, and then we'll have our planning staff or our city attorney try to offer some additional context to any of those, and then we'll move on to the next group to do the same for their group. Go ahead.
Okay. Regarding primary development area footprint, what came up first was a non-conforming setbacks, whether you have a property that's from a property boundary to property boundary, you still will have to meet fire code, and it's a case-by-case basis. But you can go to the fire department in advance of submitting, and or you can go to the fire department in advance of submitting. But what we'd like to see is the fire department memorialize some of these findings that you get from them when you go to them first, so that you can bring that to your planning meeting and have a fire approval. Yes, so that, right, so that when you bring it back to fire, they recognize that they had already approved that that aspect. As far as the primary development area, basically nothing further C-word will be allowed at the property. So they were talking about string lines and other things. You can't go any further C-word with the primary development area footprint. And then a topic came up which needs some addressing is the secondary development area. So if you have an outbuilding or something else that was destroyed, whether it's destroyed only and not the main house, or destroyed with the main house, how does that affect the primary development area when a secondary structure is destroyed? So that needed to be addressed and defined. And that's what we got for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Okay, so for, we'll go to our next side. Do we have our reporter? We can give the mic to the reporter? Thank you so much. And we'll hear from this group. And just so you know, the the staff will take your your questions or inquiries as a whole, and we'll respond to that before moving on to the next section. Group number one.
Because there are so many different areas within Malibu, the suggestion is to build within current allowable setbacks.
I'm sorry about that. Can you repeat that one more time?
So make sure, yes, whatever is on your board, thank you.
Number one, take out the word footprint and replace with the word pad. Number two, remove substantially, or at least define it. Number three, define like-for-like. In addition, there's two other issues. If, for example, the folks on the beach are required from FEMA to raise their their footprint, and they lose, or I'm sorry, to raise their, yeah, BFE, to to raise their their height, as well as follow the fire department codes for setbacks, we'd need to move laterally, particularly if we're trying to respect the view plane of the houses across the street. So we would ask that we have the ability to move laterally. Lastly is the ADU issue. Given that we have the ability to put an ADU, are we able to put that within current allowable zoning envelopes? The thought is if the decks were existing, can we use that area if we needed to move laterally?
I heard a couple of things in there. For the ADU issue, we have a full topic on that, so maybe just table that until we get to the ADU issue. This is specifically for the primary development area footprint, if it's not clear what it is we're trying to say.
Tyler?
I'm going to, I'm going to try to clarify what I thought that we we talked about. The first issue is when you use building area footprint, it confuses it with the building footprint. So we're suggesting you take footprint out, put in another word, okay? I don't care what it is. Second thing is, we would like a better definition of that pad area, okay? Like, you know, people, we as architects can look at a site plan, and we can say, you know, well, there's the building pad. Maureen brought up the point that it's actually the disturbed area, okay, which I think is fair, right? That you can move within the disturbed area. But we also acknowledge on larger lots, if you go too far outside of your existing footprint, when do you run into, you know, not being able to just comply with our planning verification streamlined process? So we think that the development pad needs to be clarified. Oh, and and we're also assuming that these relocations are all under 18 feet, so that it doesn't trigger any kind of a of a site plan review or a primary view determination. We also got a little outside the boundaries, but we questioned why Tyler is bringing up view preservation for beachfront lots using primary view determinations across the PCH when there is no site plan review required. 24 feet, 28 feet is a byright on the beach. And I believe he said he was just asked to look into it. But we want to make sure it's clear that on the beachfront lots, you you don't have to, I hate to say this, but you don't have to respect your neighbor's view because you never have before. So that that was something else. And I think, I think those were, we were our big, the other thing is, we'd like to know if we have to really comply with FEMA. We're not convinced that FEMA is is not sort of wiped out by the governor's executive order.
So I'm going to, I'm going to redirect the conversation because we're going to stay on topic for primary development area footprint. We are going to get into all of those things, Lester. So I don't want you to feel like you're losing out on the topic. To keep us on schedule and moving on, I am going to go to our virtual group report out. So I'm going to hand the mic over here to Alex, if you can let us know what was talked about with our virtual participants.
Making sure that our virtual participants are feeling feeling a part of the meeting. So I want to say thanks to Danny and Howard and Randall and Christopher and Jason for for their comments. Going along the lines of simplifying language, the word bulk and things of that nature, we wanted to simplify kind of what bulk means, maybe add a definition for bulk, so that they're in full understanding of kind of how that how that's interpreted by us. And then also somewhat tangential, but
All right, folks. So we're going to wrap up the group discussion on the primary development area footprint language. I'm going to ask the reporters in each of the groups here, that includes our virtual teams as well. Do we have any volunteers from our in-house group to go first? Okay, I'm going to bring you the mic. It's again, it's like the talking stick. You only get to talk if you have that. Okay. So as you, so to report out, if you'll report out a summary of what the group discussed and if there's amendments or clarification questions, and then we'll have our planning staff or our city attorney try to offer some additional context to any of those, and then we'll move on to the next group to do the same for their group. Go ahead.
Okay, regarding primary development area footprint. What came up first was a non-conforming setbacks. Whether you have a property that's from a property boundary to property boundary, you still will have to meet fire code and it's a case-by-case basis. But you can go to the fire department in advance of submitting and, or you can go to the fire department in advance of submitting. But what we'd like to see is the fire department memorialize some of these findings that you get from them when you go to them first, so that you can bring that to your planning meeting and have a fire approval. Yes, so that, right, so that when you bring it back to fire, they recognize that they had already approved that, that aspect. As far as the primary development area, basically nothing further C-word will be allowed at the property. So they were talking about string lines and other things. You can't go any further C-word with the primary development area footprint. And then a topic came up which needs some addressing is the secondary development area. So if you have an outbuilding or something else that was destroyed, whether it's destroyed only and not the main house or destroyed with the main house, how does that affect the primary development area when a secondary structure is destroyed? So that needed to be addressed and defined, and that's what we got for that.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Okay, so for, we'll go to our next side. Do we have our reporter? We can give the mic to the reporter. Thank you so much, and we'll hear from this group. And just so you know, the, the staff will take your, your questions or inquiries as a whole, and we'll respond to that before moving on to the next section. Group number one.
Because there are so many different areas within Malibu, the suggestion is to build within current allowable setbacks.
I'm sorry about that. Can you repeat that one more time?
So make sure, yes, whatever is on your board, thank you.
Number one, take out the word footprint and replace with the word pad. Number two, remove substantially, or at least define it. Number three, define like-for-like. So. In addition, there's two other issues. If, if, uh, uh, for example, the folks on the beach are required from FEMA to raise their, their footprint, and they lose, or I'm sorry, to raise their, yeah, BFE, to, to raise their, their height, as well as follow the fire department, um, codes for setbacks, we'd need to move laterally, particularly if we're trying to respect the view plane of the, the houses across the street. So we would ask that we have the ability to move laterally. Lastly is the ADU issue. Given that we have the ability to put an ADU, are we able to put that within current allowable zoning envelopes? The thought is if the decks were existing, can we use that area if we needed to move laterally?
I heard a couple of things in there. For the ADU issue, we have a full topic on that, so maybe just table that until we get to the ADU issue. This is specifically for the primary development area footprint. If it's not clear what it is we're trying to say.
Tyler?
I'm going to, I'm going to try to clarify what I thought that we, we talked about. The first issue is when you use building area footprint, it confuses it with the building footprint. So we're suggesting you take footprint out, put in another word, okay? I don't care what it is. Second thing is, we would like a better definition of that pad area, okay? Like, you know, people, we as architects can look at a site plan and we can say, you know, well, there's the building pad. Maureen brought up the point that it's actually the disturbed area, okay? Which I think is fair, right? That you can move within the disturbed area. But we also acknowledge on larger lots, if you go too far outside of your existing footprint, when do you run into, you know, not being able to just comply with our planning verification streamlined process? So we think that the development pad needs to be clarified. Oh, and, and we're also assuming that these relocations are all under 18 feet, so that it doesn't trigger any kind of a, of a site plan review or a primary view determination. We also got a little outside the boundaries, but we questioned why Tyler is bringing up view preservation for beachfront lots using primary view determinations across the PCH when there is no site plan review required. 24 feet, 28 feet is a byright on the beach. And I believe he said he was just asked to look into it, but we want to make sure it's clear that on the beachfront lots, you, you don't have to, I hate to say this, but you don't have to respect your neighbor's view because you never have before. So that, that was something else. And I think, I think those were, we, were our big, the other thing is, we'd like to know if we have to really comply with FEMA. We're not convinced that FEMA is, is not sort of wiped out by the governor's executive order.
So, so I'm going to, I'm going to redirect the conversation because we're going to stay on topic for primary development area footprint. We are going to get into all of those things, Lester, so I don't want you to feel like you're losing out on the topic. To keep us on schedule and moving on, I am going to go to our virtual group report out. So I'm going to hand the mic over here to Alex if you can let us know what was talked about with our virtual participants.
Making sure that our virtual participants are feeling, feeling a part of the meeting. So I want to say thanks to Danny and Howard and Randall and Christopher and Jason for, for their comments. Going on, along the lines of simplifying language, the word bulk and things of that nature. We wanted to simplify kind of what bulk means, maybe add a definition for bulk so that they're in full understanding of kind of how that, how that's interpreted by us. And then also somewhat tangential, but things that are within the primary development area that are related to, that the fire department may have jurisdiction over, kind of understanding who has the final say over what is allowed there. So in terms of your driveways, in terms of your fire access, et cetera, if fire department has different, if fire department has different priorities or different regulations than, than we do, if there's any conflicts between the two, who has the final say? If that can be somewhat clarified in, in the code as well. That's it.
Thank you so much, Alex. So what we're going to do, so everyone, first of all, give yourself a round of applause. Well done. So wait, it took a second, right? So it took a second to find a rhythm, I think, but I think everyone kind of gets the gist of it. Again, we've broken all of the amendments in the sections. And so we just went through our first part. We, I'm going to ask staff to kind of respond to some of your comments, questions for clarification on this item specifically. And once we do that, we're going to go right into the very next section. So I'm going to ask Tyler, go ahead.
There was, yeah, there's a lot there. I'm just going to talk about the primary development area footprint. One thing I do want to mention about the fire department is we, we're going to have them available Tuesdays and Thursdays at our rebuild center. So you don't need to necessarily go somewhere else to go see them. You can come to our rebuild center and have that discussion about your setbacks there. I heard, I hear you about disturbed area. We can make it more clear. What I'm hearing, I think generally, is that we need to clear this up. This is, this is essentially your building pad. The code uses the term development area, and so maybe we can look at our current development area definition and just fit some stuff into that. I think the footprint is, is tripping you up, but the footprint is added because this is speaking specifically for structures, properties that were damaged or destroyed by a natural disaster, which is why we use the term footprint, you know, what was previously there, as opposed to an existing development area that is, is, is there today. So that was the distinct difference, but that's, that's all we have. But we hear you, and, and I think the general consensus is we need to clear it up, but we're hearing that essentially it is your, your building pad, your primary building pad. So if that's easier for people to understand, I think maybe that's a fair. Yeah, yeah.
Really, really quick, let me bring the mic over to you. We do have a couple of minutes, so we can, we can take, I see a couple of hands up. So I'm going to get here first and then to you over there, sir. He's had his hand up. So we're going to do a couple of clarification questions as time allows. So first.
On primary, yes. Then the question is about the land, the land grant. Do these rights, I don't see a timeline here. If somebody opts to not rebuild and sell their property, does the buyer have, is there, are we going to have passing of rights to rebuild and, and to be able to take advantage? Because they bought it, it was burned, they bought it in the disaster. They still have to comply with all of the, the requirements, but does that run with the land? And then if so, in perpetuity, is there a timeline? Are they buying it? What if they don't build it for 10 years and 15, 20 years? Does it still run with the land?
Good question. So I'm going to just set the table and let the city attorney do the rest. So we do have some languages in the planning verification. To get back your non-conforming conditions, you have six years to get your planning verification approved from the date of the disaster. You have eight years to get a building permit from the date of disaster. So there is some limitations. You have six years. See, it runs with the land. It runs with the land.
It runs from the, the date of the disaster, and it doesn't matter whether it's the, the person who was owning at the time of, of the fire or if it's someone that they sell it to. The timeframe is the same. It doesn't matter who the owner is. These are the development rights of the property. The other piece to keep in mind too is the governor's order. You know, we anticipate, we anticipate the governor's order to remain, but that could be rescinded at some point in time. So the sooner you get that moving, the better.
Six years to approve your out, your planning verification. Apply, sorry, apply, apply. I, I do, I do want to point out, this is for a lot of you folks, the CDP exemption has no expiration for a rebuild plus 10%. So if your PV, if you don't make it in your PV for your non-conforming within six years, that exemption basically is still there. So it would, it would still fall under the municipal code. You just lose your ability to build back your non-conformities. So it would be administrative plan review and that structure would have to comply with all the rules.
And we will be reviewing the CDP exemption, so we'll be able to go into that in a little bit more detail. We have a question over here.
So Tyler, just to clarify regarding beachfront lots, because I hear you saying about fire, what fire approves versus what they don't approve on the footprints. Obviously, a lot of the beachfront lots that burned had zero lot line, right? Effectively, they had shared walls in some cases.
Like a zero setback, right?
Zero setback, you know? So I assume the governor's order stands where we get to get that non-conforming back, just to reiterate, because you, I heard the fire.
That, that, that's correct, but, you know, if there's things outside the city's control, like a fire regulation, a fire code regulation, it may be required. What we're hearing preliminarily, just for your all attention, is, is, is three feet it's looking like is the consensus. We don't have anything in writing, but that's what they're saying. They, they didn't say that a zero setback wouldn't be allowed. You just need some certain fire protections, like a certain type of, a certain type of material needs to be built. So they didn't say it's off the table, but it's their determination to make.
But I think we should clarify that just so there's no, because a lot of those houses had either shared walls or double walls. And so as long as it's fire-rated, like most row houses are, then it should be allowed. I just, I think that should be.
The city, the city will allow it if the fire department allows it, essentially.
It's not a city issue. The city would allow you to rebuild it with a zero setback.
Therein lies the rub. That's, so those are the types of things, but, you know, it is your city. It is our city. I mean, it's Malibu. So of course county, it has to be fire safe, but when there's a firewall, I mean, I think the city could get involved in there and, and make a statement regarding that, right?
Okay, we can definitely take that feedback. So I don't see any more quick hands, so we are going to move to our next section. Yay! Okay. All right, Tyler, teeing you up. Our next section is going to be for temporary housing provisions. Again, temporary housing provisions. This is going to be a meaty chunk of what we'll talk about today. So if you, as your scribes, want to clear your boards and get ready to take down all that you would like in regards to questions, comments for this specific section. We also recognize that there is overlap between temporary housing provisions and ADUs. I do want to make it very clear though, that we are taking both of those separately since one lies with the LCP and one is in the municipal code. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Tyler.
Okay, so if you're familiar with what was allowed.
Excuse me, can I get everyone's attention? For those, just to, we're, we're going to do a quick overview. I realize that we went through this earlier, but I'm going to ask Tyler to just, for the record, go through it one more time, so we can then jump right into it. So if I just have your attention for a couple of minutes.
Is that better? Okay. The big picture for temporary homes is we're reducing it from 1,200 to 1,000. And that, you know, to Alexis's point, we're going to get to ADUs, but that's in case you want to convert this to an ADU later on. You are allowed to because it's consistent with that law. So that's the point of that. We up the fines for the bad players, as I mentioned before, from 100 to 500. We, we are now requiring that only the property owner or tenant living at the property at the date of the natural disaster is allowed to take advantage of this temporary home. That was, it's a new requirement. A new requirement is also that there's a limited geotechnical report required, a limited one, just to make sure your temporary home is safe in those debris flow areas and it doesn't, you know, if there's a debris flow, it's not going to be an issue. And if it's not on wheels, it must show compliance with the building code. And if it is on wheels, then it must be fastened to the ground.
All right, so I'm going to start the timer and go ahead into your group discussions.
All right, folks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and say it seems like the discussion has, you know, kind of moved on from the temporary housing, if that's a fair statement. So I'm gonna ask our scribes to wrap up kind of what we were talking about, or what the tables were talking about in relation to temporary homes. And we're gonna dive in. And I am going to switch it up and ask for table one to go first. I will bring the mic over to you. Technically, just because you went first doesn't mean your table won't. But yes, we're, you're first in your hearts. I'm gonna take the mic over there. Just one moment.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask people to correct me if I'm getting any of this wrong. Wheels versus anchors, the concern that if you're, if you're on wheels, that the wind may blow you over, that that's not sufficiently stable. Did I get that right? Helical anchors is the solution. Okay, great. Okay, 1,000 square foot, I don't remember what the issue was. Okay, they want to up 1,000 square foot to 1,200.
So 1,200 is currently exists. 1,200 currently exists, so you'd be proposing to keep the language, right?
Yes.
Okay. Meant to be temporary and make into ADU, I think those kind of go together. What was the issue there? Okay, so we'll talk about, talk about that next. So two-year permit for ADU, for temporary, oh, for temporary housing to renew, because you don't want, you don't want people just indefinitely living on the property if they, if they run out of money. Current is four plus two. Want to keep that? Want to keep that? Four plus two. And to a six-year maximum.
So I know, there's a lot of chatter happening, and this is the part of the meeting for the full council to hear the reporting out. So we want to make sure those with the mic are those that are conveying everything happening.
So that's, so that's the six-year maximum, which is four plus two. That's current code, stick with it. And then for, in order to encourage people to feel like they're not going to run out of money, it would be nice to work with state and federal authorities to find a way to help everybody gap what their under insurance is. So from whatever your insurance pays to whatever gets you to a safe, secure, fire-safe rebuild, there should be, the government should be helping get people to that place. Helps everybody, helps the state stay solvent, helps insurers come back into the state. Otherwise, the people will just run out of money and they won't meet code.
Thank you so much. So we're gonna come back over here to our, our next table. Ask for a reporting out. And again, after the reporting out, we'll, we'll do our virtual report out, and then staff will kind of address all the questions or clarification comments that come up at this portion.
Hello?
Okay, temporary housing. So the table here was okay with 1,000 square feet. The, there was questions about, you know, the rental policy, whether the owner who rented pri, so for instance, if there was a tenant that rented the house prior to the fire, and they have moved on and rented a different property, should the owner be allowed to rent to a different tenant? Because currently, it's restricted under this, this part of thing. Also, there's questions about in-laws and other families. So suppose during this process, someone gets old, your parents, and they need to move in, or something like that, would it be allowable for them to live in there? And then finally, there was a question about those who have lost their houses on the beachfront due to a natural disaster. Would those victims who are unable to put their own temporary housing, would they qualify as an exemption to rent a temporary housing on the land side? That is it.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna hand the mic to Alex for our virtual group.
Yeah, want to say thanks to Howard, Sherry, Rami, Robert, and Danny for, for their comments just recently. As far as specific to the code amendments for temporary homes, we just had one comment from, well, we had multiple comments, but in terms of specifics to the, to the, to the code, Howard wanted to mention, just to make as clear as possible, just for laypeople to understand what's going on there. So that's what we had. Thanks.
Great, thank you so much. So Tyler and our city attorney is joining over here, if there's any clarification you want to add to this.
So I, I guess one table was good with 1,000, the other table wanted the 1,200, so we're kind of mixed on that. Renting to other tenants, yeah, the way we propose the code, this is new, this is new stuff we're adding. Basically, you have to be owner or the tenant living on the property, the, you know, the council can consider, you know, loosening that up a bit. Maybe you get one renter, you know, one renter that's not the, the person who was living there at the time. Can your in-laws live there? Yes, it's written to, that your family can live there if you're the property owner. And then something about, I don't know if I got it correctly, but land side location, I just want to say that the, it, it needs to be on your property is the main thing.
Yeah, so it, it's not written that way right now, but if that was the intent that anybody whose home was damaged or destroyed, displaced by, would be eligible to rent one of these properties, that's something, a change that could be made there. But we're putting through, this would be a change, not just for the Palisades fires, for any, anyone who's in a natural disaster. Yeah. Yeah. If, if you're a Malibu resident displaced by, you know, by a natural disaster, you could be, the, the choice would be then to make them eligible to rent a temporary location, either on their own property or on another property. Just a choice for the council.
Okay, we do have a couple of minutes left in this time allotment. Were there any clarification questions? I have one hand up post-staff response.
The, the question I have is, if we're looking at 1,000 square feet, just using simple numbers, the Department of Transportation allows a 14-foot wide unit to travel on the freeways if it is wheeled. So if we have a 14-foot wide unit, and we're going with 1,000 square feet, and then we have, up in the hills, we have a 20-foot truck length maximum to be able to make the turns, how are we doing the math to do the modules that it's gonna take to make that 1,000 feet? We're limited by 14 feet, we're limited by 20, and now, now we go, uh-oh, how many modules do we need to get 1,000? And then if it's 1,200, that's a whole nother concept, but there's some math here.
So just a second, we do need to make sure that we, we respond on the mic. Sam, if you can go ahead and repeat yourself, that would be wonderful.
The 1,000, the 1,000 is just the maximum. You can do smaller units. The, how you get it up there would be determined based on your set, on your lot. If it is more technologically challenging to get a larger unit up there, you might need to explore other options for units that you put up there, essentially. It's just the maximum, you don't have to do it.
Great.
And you can build it.
I see one more hand up, thank you.
I just had a clarification for the people who don't have space for an ADU on the coast, and have asked to possibly use the ADU on land. Is that, will that mean that the property that they're gonna be living in and the ADU would have more than one ADU? So they essentially use their ability to have an ADU on the beach where they're not, oh, temporary, sorry, whatever we're saying, the 1,000. If that person can then use their permission to have that and transfer it up into the land? Well, I mean, that's a question, because if they end up living up the land, then what's the homeowner gonna live in? So both of them can live in the land.
Yeah, again, that's not written, that's not currently in the law, that's something we can take note of. I, I think the intent, as you guys have all kind of, I heard you guys all talking, is to allow homeowners that were affected by the fire somewhere to live. And so it could be feasible, we'll have to look into what type of language that looks like, and if the council decides to take that direction.
Okay, I just thought was something should be addressed.
Got time for one more, Lester? Go ahead.
Real, real quick, so I, I appreciate the gentleman that sort of talked about the, the difficulties of getting 1,000 square feet of single structure to some of these lots. I kind of wonder if we can't just take out the no more than two temporary housing, or come up with a different, I don't know, metric for people that are up in the hills and up in the windy roads, that want to park three trailers, okay? That's way under 1,000 square feet, that might work for some people. I think we're, we're cutting, we're selling people short with the way this is written. That's all I'd like to say, for now.
Okay. Well, thank you all, we have successfully completed section two. We have one more section of LCP, and it is probably the biggest. It is our coastal development permit exemptions and de minimis waivers topic. So I'm gonna ask Tyler to give a brief overview once again of what we are currently proposing, and then we will go into group discussions once more. So scribes, great opportunity to clear your boards and be ready to take notes, and we'll get into it.
Okay, so for coastal development permit exemptions, we have, and this is a, what I'm hearing is a, is a big issue with you guys. Keep in mind, local coastal program amendment, local coastal program does not apply to Palisades Fire if you don't want it to be. You have two tools in the de minimis waiver category, which we'll get to, but don't think of this in the frame of the Palisades Fire, think of this in the frame of the other, of the other fires and onward, how it's going to help those residents. So don't think of the governor's order when you think of this. I know some of it is framed that way, just, I just want to keep you, keep that in mind.
Yeah, this is, the idea, this is as close as we can get to the governor's order through the LCP is the intention here.
Yeah, but just to make it clear that this is not the governor's order, this is the perpetuity code that will last after the governor's order. Okay, so the big, one of the big issues is the CDP exemptions. And so CDP exemptions are different than de minimis waivers. So if you're exempt from a CDP, that means the LCP does not apply to your project, if the planning director can, can find that you are within these categories. And so the CDP exemption that exists for a property that was damaged or destroyed is shown on the screen here, it is for the same use as the destroyed structure, that's existing language. Now, the planning commission wanted to put in the footprint and height consistent with the governor's order. I showed you some demonstrations on, 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 on the staff recommendation to keep it as it is, you guys can, can debate on what you prefer going forward. And then we added the term substantially to number three, to going back, the, the way it was worded is you have to, you had to be put back in the exact same location. So that term substantially is added here, this is speaking directly to your rebuild structure, so that you can have a little bit of wiggle room on that footprint. And then here's, I can put these up as you guys discuss, that's the height bulk footprint issue that we just went into. Here's the 10% limitation on your footprint, if we do have that language added. So I'll put those up on the screen as we go, and this is a big chapter. Other, other things we're adding in the CDP exemptions, again, not waived, but exempt from the coastal development permit process, is mechanized equipment on the beach and temporary shoring necessary for you to build your replacement structure, and then onsite wastewater treatment systems within. and then onsite wastewater treatment systems within that primary development area footprint or building pad, whatever you want to call it. If you're putting back your onsite wastewater treatment system in that development area, it will be exempt from a CDP. Okay, so now we're moving on to de minimis waivers. A lot of information, I know. I'll go around to help with this one, but de minimis waivers are different than coastal development permit exemptions. So in a nutshell, it's a waived from the LCP process, but we still have to make findings, and there's still some LCP regs that apply. But the coastal commission, one thing I should say, I think I forgot to mention in this, in the presentation, was that the planning commission asked us to put all of these de minimis waiver categories into the exemption category. We tried with the coastal commission staff, and there's some state regulations that just disallow us to do that. So it's in the state law, but I'll pass it to Trevor.
The exemption is exempt from the coastal act, so there's limitations about what we can put into there. And coastal is not, you know, I want to say there's flexibility on this, but in terms of moving to an exemption, these just, they cannot find a way to make that fit within the exemption.
Waivers are better than nothing because all of this stuff would require coastal development permit if it wasn't waived. So it's better than nothing. So what can be in a de minimis waiver?
I mean, it's, it's a very good system. It'll be administrative. It's very different. There's no public hearings that are required, you know, for it. It's, you bring it in, it will be determination by the planning director, and then it's just reported to the planning commission. So that way that it can be some daylight about what these projects are and if there were any mistakes that were, you know, made within the calculations, but it'll be a quick process.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Trevor. So what are, in the de minimis waiver category? If your OWTS has to be sighted outside your development footprint, if your OWTS was sighted outside of your development footprint area, then you need to get a DMW. If you are improving your driveway and you're cutting on slopes that are three to one steeper, that can be done under a DMW language as proposed. You can go up to, you can have retaining walls up to six feet, nine feet if it's a replacement wall. If you have a C-wall, but you need to go over 10% in height to, you know, achieve the protection for your OWTS, you can do that under a de minimis waiver. And then these two are up for debate, at least the first one is. It's the height increase that currently staff interpretation is that it is a gap in the governor's order. And so Palisades Fire, if you needed your FEMA increase, you would need this DMW. And then the other one, which I think is more consensus that it is outside the governor's order because it's not in substantially the same location, is if you're moving your home onto a much different footprint than was there. So not within 50%, completely outside the original footprint, then the DMW, it processes there for you as well. So that's it. And then we'll have some visuals so you guys can kind of talk about these issues.
Okay, folks, so we will go ahead and start the group discussion for this topic. I know that it's pretty heavy. So our city attorney and Tyler will be jumping into the groups and helping guide the conversation as well.
All right, folks. This is just a five-minute kind of warning here, just for the, the group discussion. So five, about five more minutes on this topic. All, I know I had mentioned that we had a time warning, but we're going to go ahead. I know the conversations are still very heavy and going on, so we're going to keep moving and give a, give another five minutes add-on, so. This is a two-minute wrap-up, two-minute wrap-up? All right, folks. Want to start wrapping up this part of the conversation? And just so you know, once we get through this part of the conversation, we will be taking a break for the room, just to collect and come back in. Okay, we are going to get started with our virtual group first. It is their turn to go first to report out, and then we'll make our way across the room. Really appreciate everyone's patience. There's a lot of great discussion happening with this topic. I know it was very heavy. So I'm going to ask Alex to come up for the virtual report-out.
Can we, can we reduce the crosstalk for a moment, please, for this report-out?
All right, all. Again, we know that there was a lot discussed, and we can, we can keep moving, but we do want to be able to report out to the groups before we take that break. Like, as we mentioned, we will be taking a break after this, and then we're coming back, and we're going to resume the conversation. But I am going to turn it over for our virtual report-out. Alex, let us know what's going on.
Yep. Lively discussion on the, on the virtual sphere here. Want to say thanks to Danny, Sean, Chris, and Howard for their, for their comments. Our comments kind of centered on specifically the, on two things. So the certification of the OWTS systems that people would be using the rebuild development permits for, kind of either making this a, an issue with, within planning, within the building department, within council, et cetera. Who has the jurisdiction to certify if an OWTS system is usable? So trying to figure out who, if applicants are allowed to self-certify through an independent specialist, or if there's going to be sort of blanket language of some sort to, to kind of allow that process to go forward from a, from a self-certification perspective. So kind of a lot of questions about effectively, can septic tanks be grandfathered in if, if they are deemed still usable after the fire? And then also, probably worth clarifying, Tyler and Trevor, kind of how, how you, what the rebuild development permit can allow you to do in terms of replacing an OWTS or a new one? That's probably worth just clarifying again, kind of just making sure everybody knows that, how, what is the mechanism that they can use pending an OWTS system is reusable? they can use pending an OWTS system is reusable, or not reusable, or what have you? What is the mechanism that we have inputted that will allow them to use to get through planning? Over.
Okay, so the first part about reusing your septic, reusing your foundations, it's a building code issue. Come to our March 12 meeting on Wednesday and have this discussion with the building official who will give you feedback on what may or may not be allowed. All this is, is a mechanism to, if you have to replace your septic or your OWTS, you have to replace your driveway and make it wider for fire department requirements. It's just giving you the mechanism to get that through the planning law.
What was your other question?
Sorry, I lost my train of thought there.
Oh, yeah, just clarification on the mechanisms that that one can use, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so rebuild development permit is for the Palisades Fire specifically, for the most part, because you're exempt from, the LCP suspended. So what other people in other fires would need to get through a DMW, you're allowed to get through a rebuild development permit. If you've been through the process before, it's really no different than getting a planning verification. It's very similar, similar application, basically a rubber stamp if you meet all the criteria. It's a lot, it is a lot easier to get than a DMW, but that's only for Palisades Fire.
Okay, we're going to move right over here to our next group if we have a report-out for this group two, although I understand that it's also looked at as group one. But I'll say Mary Ann and Halen's group will be the next group to report out. Do we have a reporter? Perfect.
All right, the number-one table thinks that, that, so questions were brought up, why was it a DMW instead of just a planning verification or a rebuild development? Like, why did we add another layer or another type of approval? That was one thing. We wanted, but didn't quite get there to define substantially. So that would be helpful to get a little more on that. And then the vote at this table was pretty significant to eliminate bulk with, by a 16 to 5 vote, and, but to take into account view impacts as part of that. And then there was a question about whether water and fire suppression should be added to the DMW for a driveway, and we were told that it is in there. And people just needed a better explanation about bulk as well. And most people want to have some pushback against FEMA, so.
About, yeah, the height, that having to raise your properties up for beachfront.
Okay, there was a lot there. So rebuild development permit again. So we got a, this is the LCP we're talking about here. So this isn't really for Palisades Fire. I think that's, my ticker's at 15 now for the night. But we still wanted to get the same, you know, type of things for our folks that lost their homes in the Woolsey Fire, for lost their homes in the Franklin Fire, lost their homes in the Broad Fire. So these are added as de minimis waiver categories or options. And the reason they can't be a planning verification, let me go back to my definition of the planning verification. It's not my definition, it's within the code. Essentially, a planning verification by definition is something that is a, is replacing a structure, a previous structure. So there's, you know, if you're completely upgrading your OWTS and it's in a new location, that's a new structure. If you're completely moving your driveway, you're completely adding these new retaining walls that have never been there, those are new structures. And so that's why you need these mechanisms via the rebuild development permit for Palisades and via DMW for LCP, or for all other fires, to get those that may be required by other agencies like the fire department by building code, et cetera. Was there more there? Did I get it?
Okay, we're going to go to the next table. I appreciate that everyone is taking turns at that table for the reporting out. Go ahead.
We had a vigorous discussion, and the first thing that we talked about was what Section 30610 actually says. That's a section of the Coastal Act, and the advice that the Coastal Commission has given our staff and the city attorney noted that certain aspects of 30610 do not allow improvements to existing single-family homes for septic systems, secondary dwelling units, things of that nature. And we are of the opinion that they are conflating that with the 30610 exemption for disaster replacement, which just simply says disaster replacement. And we think that the governor's executive order is pretty clear that anything that is necessary for the fire rebuilds is exempt under the Palisades Fire. And so we also had the conversation in regards to what's in the staff report that says that the planning commission's recommendation did not have the de minimis waivers, but the exemptions is something the city could put forward, but that the coastal commission staff might slow-walk the local coastal program amendment. If we give them the de minimis waivers, then they'll get us in on April and we'll get it approved. If we go for the exemptions, it may take longer, and that's obviously something that's entirely at the discretion of the city council and their deliberations. We also talked about the FEMA floodplain and the BFE, the base floor elevation. And it was pointed out that currently, for a new home, the way that we measure height for a beach house is from the minimum floor elevation is required by the coastal engineer. Therefore, if you take a house, theoretical, because it's gone, and you simply lift up that house so you meet the BFE and the FEMA floodplain, that's not increasing the height of the house as we measure it by the current standards. Therefore, we believe that picking up that fire rebuild house to meet the BFE is not something that needs a waiver or anything else, that it is something that is covered by the governor's executive order. And then we also talked a little bit more about the aspects as it pertained to whether or not the city council could ask the director of public works to give floodplain waivers. The director is the floodplain manager. There's a very grave concern that was articulated that that could put in jeopardy the ability of anybody on that entire stretch of the beach from getting flood insurance, which is not just an inconvenience. Many people need that to be able to get their mortgage. However, that being said, it is something that ought to be examined in greater detail to see whether or not relief from the FEMA floodplain levels is something that the city should consider through the Department of Public Works. What else? Yeah, and so the, what Lester just reiterated is that the coastal engineers' reports are more accurate than FEMA, but nonetheless, we need to meet FEMA. And what the coastal engineer reports give us is the maximum wave-breaking height, and therefore the minimum floor elevation for the diaphragm that the house is going to be built upon, that concrete slab. It was also suggested that perhaps the city could play a role in getting neighbors together so that they pool their resources with the coastal engineers. And it was stated rightfully that so that we all use the same three or four coastal engineers that are competent and know what they're doing, and perhaps there could be cost savings for certain stretches along the beach. Was there something that I missed, or did I cover it? Anything else? Oh, and also, whether, you know, as it pertains, did I just say you know twice in one sentence? Major faux pas. Okay. So one other thing that was very important that was raised is having a clear understanding of amendments as necessary for the municipal code. And so when the council deliberates on this, it's urged that when they come to consensus in regards to the local coastal program amendment process, that one of the things that you have a great deal, basically unlimited authority as a council, is anything you need to do to amend the municipal code to faithfully implement the direction that you're taking things with the local coastal program amendment ought to be pretty simple, but you need to make sure that there's consistency and continuity between the local coastal program amendment for all past fires and future fires, or disaster replacements, not just fires, flood, anything else. So that's something that they ought to be very, a bright light on the council's radar.
But, so, hold on, if, just, Lester, if you said you didn't get to those and discuss them as a group, then we're going to hold that until the next section, because it needs to be for a group discussion at your table. So we're going to, so Don, thank you so much for that very thorough report-out. Tyler, real quick, before you answer some of those questions that, from the, from that table, I am going to ask Alex, we had one item left on our virtual report-out we didn't mention, and then we will provide some feedback there, and then we're going to go for a break. So just one moment.
Yeah, just wanted to add one more thing that Danny had mentioned. There is a lot of discussion about the differences between conventional and advanced OWTS. And, you know, when we talk about replacement, replacement OWTSs and using the RDP, does that really do mean that someone can replace their OWTS with the same technology that was there before the fire? So, you know, there's conventional OWTS and there's advanced OWTS. There's, there was a lot of discussion about the expenses that are incurred when someone has to upgrade to an advanced system. And so when you use the RDP and you're allowed to replace an OWTS, OWTS system, does that also mean the technology that was, that was there before?
So there's a means and methods, and there's giving you what you need to get an entitlement. And I think this is a means and methods thing. You're asking, can I reuse my conventional system? It's a building code requirement, not for this planning discussion here tonight. I keep saying, and I apologize that we don't have the answers for you tonight, the building official left, but come to our March 12, next Wednesday, these are the questions, those technical questions of how-to, you know, what materials do I need to use on my building? Can I reuse my foundation? Can I reuse my OWTS? That's for March 12. To Don, okay, Don, Mr. Don Schmitz over there, I have one thing to say, and just to start is, we, you're right, that we do measure on the ocean side from, you know, you cut the building in half, right? And so you do measure from the, from the finished floor on the ocean side. However, as my diagram shows here, the other half you measure from the land side. And this person on the land side is getting affected, no matter, you can call it what you want, the fact of the matter is, there's a new projection vertically that is going to be, is going to possibly have impact on residents. I'm not for or against, I'm just here to inform. I just wanted to state that for the record. But go ahead, Trevor.
Sure. I mean, there's implications if you were going to take an interpretation of the governor's order about the height on that side. If that is how it's going to be interpreted, then there would be potential issues for people that have any views or looking over these properties. Coming back to, there was a, talk about the exemption versus de minimis waiver. Our discussions with Coastal is not that it would be slow-walk, but they wouldn't be able to support a text amendment to make a number of these things into exemptions. De minimis waivers was already a stretch for them to be able to do. And to be fair, a lot of these things that we're requesting are not something that is appearing in other people's LCPs. And to get them as a de minimis waiver is a big step for Coastal to go that route. So we can always test them, we can always push it forward, but it was not a slow-walk. It was very clear that they said that Coastal Act would not support those falling within the exemptions.
All right, folks. I do see, I see one raised hand. And we can have, we've got time for two questions. So I see these two raised hands right here. So just to say, if we can go ahead there. Again, this is on the subject matter at hand. Go ahead.
On the, okay, on the exemptions, right, A3, that's what we're talking about, right?
Lester, I got to say, it was the gentleman to your left that has his hand raised. I'm not trying to, I appreciate the effort. I appreciate the effort.
Lester.
Hot potato, hot potato.
Lester, the word is gentleman, okay? Keep that in your, in your toolbox. Okay. So my question, Trevor, is, maybe this is dumb question number 312, but if we're governor's EO to not have anything to do with Coastal, why we keep worrying about what they're going to say, and we have to do, and we're dancing around all these things? Why, tell me just simply, why are we so worried about that?
So it seems to be a lot of confusion about this. Anyone in the Palisades Fire is subject to the governor's order, remains under it. Putting these LCP amendments through is not going to apply to people that are, that are going to be able to rebuild under the governor's order. That's going to be, be applied to its maximum extent to anyone in the Palisades Fire. The goal of what's being put through here for the provisions in the LCP is to give the same, or is close to the same treatment that people who get the benefit of the governor's order to other people. Woolsey Fire victims, people that were in the Franklin Fire, or something that comes out in the future. The only two that really would come into play for people that are in the Palisades Fire are the one that allows relocation and the one that deals with the FEMA flood maps.
Clearly, my debate challenge on Thursday has caused some fire on your part. Challenge still holds, by the way.
Yours was not the second hand. So I'm going to shut you down one more time. It was right here.
You're not kidding me.
I am so sorry.
No, you're not.
I actually am, but we have time for two questions. This gentleman raised his hand here, right here. This is the next question. Matt, thank you. Just so you know, we're not done for the evening, guys, right? It's a break, and we come back. Lester, shoot your hand up, real quick. There we go. You're in the queue already.
Are we on? Yes. Just a quick question for the room with all the resources we have here. Is anyone here, as, oh, into the microphone, there we go. Just a question for the resources that are in the room. Is there any, as a contractor, is anyone here from LA City, or LA County, or City of Malibu, or city attorney, who can clarify the conversation of which contractor's licenses, which Department of Industrial Relations has WAPA certifications versus CSLV Contractor State License Board has designation? I came to early, an hour early to talk to Dee and Elke, and they didn't have the answers. So if there's anyone here that can answer that? For debris removal, yes.
So.
For debris removal.
Two items. One, that, what your question resides with is LA County. That's, that's not the City of Malibu. And two, that's not what we're here to talk about tonight, so we can talk right now during the break? No, is the short answer. Gotcha. Okay, folks, thank you so much. We are, we are now going to, we're now going to take a break. We will reconvene at 6:30, and we will begin on the next section of amendments. Thank you all so much.
All right, everybody. We're gonna get started if I can ask everyone to find their seats.
You need a whistle, like a lifeblood whistle?
I gotta get back on.
Are we ready? So I recognize we have a little bit smaller group, but not quite. So we are moving from the LCP amendments to the zoning text. Zoning text amendments in our Malibu municipal code. That is the next order of business. We are doing the same sections. Lester, good news, it looks like you're more likely to get the mic with less people in the room. So we are going to start with ADUs. That is gonna be the first order of business. I'm gonna turn it over to Tyler. We are situated, if I could ask everyone to die down the cross chatter we got going on.
Okay, so. So now we're in the municipal code as Alexis mentioned. So this applies, everything here applies to Palisades Fire. It also applies to all the other fires. So this is all encompassing. These are the rules. Uh, so everyone's clear on that. So accessory dwelling units in 2024, the city council passed an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Um, it has some, the, the LCP and the MMC had some differing text. Our LCP has not been certified by the coastal commission in terms of our ADU ordinance. Um, but our ADU ordinance has been passed by, uh, you know, it has been adopted by our city council. And so it is in effect in the Malibu municipal code. The ADU ordinance was written heavily, uh, you know, with the, um. It was heavily to mimic state law. When it got passed by council in 2024, there was some, a couple of extra caveats related to fire protections because we're in a very high fire hazard severity zone. Um, the planning commission, uh, so essentially how this works with an ADU. The governor's order for Palisades Fire said you do not need, uh, you know, the coastal act and CQ are suspended for ADUs. Meaning if you're, if you're in the Palisades Fire and you want to do an ADU on your property, you just have to meet the Malibu municipal code, which is seven, chapter 17.44. There's some minimum setback requirements. It's like four feet, there's, it's, it's a lot of it just meets the state minimums. Um, so if you meet all those requirements, you can potentially get an ADU permit. Um, our proposed change that we have is that, uh, we mimic state law. Um, so we had a limit, if you're doing a one bedroom or studio, it was 850. And a thousand, if you're doing a two bedroom, we just said, let's just make it a thousand universal, uh, not, not based on bedroom. And then this was, um, something that the planning commission asked the council to consider. Uh, we were not, we don't have any recommendations on it tonight. Uh, but, um, planning commission wanted the council to consider eliminating the 20 foot wide street with requirement. That, um, so basically in order to get an ADU, you, your main street that you have access to, uh, from your property needs to be 20 feet wide. And if it's not at least 20 feet wide, you will not be able to get an ADU. So that was added as extra fire protections, uh, because the fire department requires 20 foot access widths. That was the, the basis of that. So again, staff does not have a recommendation on it. It's just, uh, something that the council can consider, um, if there's enough people wanting that. That's it.
Thank you so much, Tyler. Okay, groups, uh, the time is turned over to you. Please start your discussions.
All this is your five-minute warning, five minutes. Two-minute warning, two-minute to wrap up group discussion on ADUs. All right, folks, we can wrap up the discussion. We're going to start with the report out portion of ADUs, starting right here in the middle. Do I have a reporter? Joe's going to take it. Hi, everyone. Hey, Bruce. So, the governor, his order, I don't want an ADU personally, but his order was supposed to be more lenient towards affordable housing and ADUs. So, we are suggesting that a new ADU or a junior ADU should only require an RDP as per the governor's order, or a PV. It's really changing bedrooms that affect septic, not water flow. So, I think it should be given a choice of if someone could have an ADU or an extra bathroom. Low-flow fixtures should receive a credit against existing fixture counts. And with regards to the 20-foot street width requirement, we are saying it should be 20 feet, but subject to whatever the fire department requires. So, if the fire department says it doesn't have to be 20 feet, then it doesn't have to be 20 feet. Is there anything I missed? Oh, roadway, yeah, yeah, the street. Oh, yeah. And also, it has to be on the, with, this is on the beach side, if someone wanted to convert their garage to an ADU, as long as they were within half a mile of a bus stop, they can not have their parking anymore, apparently.
Okay, thank you, Joe. We're going to move over to our first table.
Okay, so, just to caveat, our conversation centered around fire rebuilds, although this reads as a zoning text amendment overall, but we wanted to stay focused on the fire rebuilds. We'll start with the last item first. I think there was consensus across our table to eliminate the 20-foot wide street width requirement for ADUs. We had some discussion on how many homes, you know, that 20-foot rule will apply to. I think quite a few in Big Rock. There was a vigorous discussion on should we exempt TDSFs for ADUs. Lester was making good arguments in favor of that. Steve, not so much. He doesn't like the idea. Bruce's clear point was to not complicate the like-for-like plus 10% bills with ADUs in the mix. That should be noted. We had some discussion on geologically complicated areas and what ADUs would mean for that. A nice compromise seems to be a junior ADU with about 500 square feet. Anything on that? Beachfront doesn't have TDSF, so, yeah, they can.
Yes, you can elaborate, Lester. Elaborate, not embellish.
Okay, all right. It says ADU, okay? Okay, I feel like we need to have some amount of exemption for TDSF for ADUs for these small lots, okay? Because if you have a small lot and you can maybe get a 2,500-square-foot house, 3,000 or whatever, you had that, and you'd like to get some form of an ADU in there, but it kicks you over your TDSF, I feel like there should be some amount of exemption of square footage. Now, I honestly don't know enough about the junior ADUs, but some of the more astute people at my table have suggested that there's a way to do that. I don't know it, but I really think we should be talking about some form of exempt TDSF for the ADUs. I don't need to know now, I'm just saying.
Noted, Lester, thank you. And Matt, if you'll get the mic over here to Mayor Protem Riggins, please.
Okay, I have a clarification question for staff. On a beachfront home that chooses to, if they can fit it within their box, are they going to be subject to a CDP for going over their 10% height? Or will it still be allowed to be an APR for the ADU if they're adding that additional square footage?
The ADU will not be part of your 10%, because that's, the 10% is for your replacement home. You're limited to 1,000 square feet, and if you're not, if you're on the beach, you're not prohibited, you're not limited by TDSF. So, if you can fit it on your lot somehow, it's feasible.
Okay, so they can get a 1,000-square-foot addition, providing it stays within the allowable box with the APR for the ADU only?
Correct.
One second, do you want to take the?
Yeah, there is a height issue. It's limited to 16 feet, but go ahead, Trevor.
Oh, I was just saying, on the beachfront, the issue is you can't stack your ADU on top of your first story, because you can't go under 16 feet.
But you could put it on the first floor. It's how you design it.
But then you're going to have an issue with the structure's going to trip over.
I think, so, me and Trevor are talking over here, but I said that, yes, 16-foot height rule applies. Maybe I misunderstood Mayor Protem's comment, but if it's within your box, is what I thought I heard, and the ADU is not taller than 16 feet, I think that would be allowed, right?
Yeah, they're talking about building on top of, you go up to 16 feet.
You can go up to 16 feet, but you could flip it, right? So, you could put your home square footage on the top and your ADU on the bottom, as long as it's within your same bulk. If you're within the bulk. Is that what I heard, Mayor Protem?
We're going to, while we converse here for a second, we're going to go to our virtual report out here, and hopefully we can get a little bit more clarification before we move on to the next subject. So, Alex?
Yeah, thanks to Miriam, Christopher, and Joan for their comments. Effectively, the, you know, the governor's order does not talk about square footage, but our MMC/LIP and the recommendations do. So, there is confusion about what the city is counting towards the additional 10%, and whether or not, you know, that is either square footage, whether that's footprint, et cetera. How can we kind of clarify the two for folks who want to build plus their 10%? So, that's one. Sorry, did you guys catch that? Yeah, let me say that when I talk. So, the, you know, the governor's order doesn't talk about square footage in terms of adding 10%. Our code recommendations do. There's some confusion about what we're counting in relation to the 10%. So, there is some discussion about that. So, we'd love clarification on that. And then, on top of that, in terms of the ADUs, the driveways for ADUs and in terms of the 20-foot-wide requirements potentially by the fire department, if folks have a smaller driveway for an ADU that was burned down, is that length grandfathered in with the rebuild? Or do they have to come up to 20 feet or whatever the fire department is requiring at that time? And, yeah, that's it.
I'll answer the first question, or the last question first. So, yeah, the driveway widening is up to the fire department, but we have the mechanisms via the RDP or the DMW to increase your width if needed with your retaining walls, et cetera. What the gentleman was, Alex, what Alex was referring to, the gentleman in their group has an issue where their box is already established, their envelope, and they have a loft situation in their home. And so, the way the MMC is currently worded, it's limited to, so this is not the governor's order, because the governor's order is footprint and height, so wouldn't, this would be allowed under the governor's order potentially. But in our municipal code, you're still limited to 10% square footage. This person says, I'm still completely within my box, I just want to expand my two-story loft, and that's going to put me over 10% square footage. As the code is written right now, they would not be allowed to do that. They're asking for some grace on that, because technically, on the outside, there's no impact. So, you know, we could write something in there if the council wants to consider that. If there's no exterior impact, then maybe you're allowed to go more than 10%. It's up to the council for a normal house.
Tyler, clarification. So, you're talking about the mezzanine section, so, which requires that it can't be greater than 1/3 of the area below?
Yeah, but they're asking that you basically don't call it a mezzanine no more. Now, it's a full floor, but because it's in your box already, is that going to be okay?
But is that going to trigger into a third-story condition?
It, well, I don't know what their situation exactly. The way it was described to me was it was a two-story loft, so it was a second story.
So, I think that my follow-up question would be, you know, is it going to create a third-story condition where the mezzanine is just there, and they have a two-story house with a tall ceiling on that second story?
That's a good question. Yeah, you wouldn't be able, to Mayor Protem's point, you would not be able to create a third-story condition. So, if this was a two-story condition, that's what I think what they're asking for.
Okay, so if you heard my timer, that was the timer for the report out and comment section. I do see a couple of hands up. We would like to keep moving into the next section. We can take, if there's one general question from each table. I've already seen the hands up. Sorry, Lester, that's not yours. So, I will ask Luca. Luca will be the question for this table here, and I will ask the gentleman in the hat over there to be the second question.
I just wanted, I just wanted more clarification on the TDSF and the square footage that are going to be allowed or not for these temporary housing and then transformed into potentially ADUs. So, is the amount of square footage allowed for these temporary housing and then eventually transform into ADUs beyond the allowed TDSF or not?
The way that the law is currently worded in the MMC is TDSF applies.
Mr. Purge would be the next question.
Yeah, so going back to the beachfront. So, if said house raises up, in some cases, they're going to be eight feet above PCH, unless we have levitating cars, the garage will be on the PCH level. The old garage... The old garage, if we're not adding any more .10, we could convert that space, because it's technically under 16 feet, if you really want to say it, as an ADU in the old garage space. Just saying, your one-story house is now nine feet above PCH. So the height moved, it's still the first story, even though it's nine feet above PCH. If I put my ADU in the old garage, then that's now under the 16 feet, and it's on the first floor, and it's within the footprint of the house, and my garage is now just a carport, or whatever it ends up being. What, what ramp? I don't know, the, the, if, there's a case of houses that are eight feet higher on somewhere across some tuna, whatever, there's, there's something, it's a parking deck underneath the house. So that's just, but your old garage was part of your house before. We're just making that into a legal ADU, part of the square footage. I know, there isn't nothing.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask staff, or a city attorney is, is gonna be able to respond to that, Mr. Verch?
Well, it's...
I, I just want to, like...
And then, and then the second, the second thing is, when we were talking, how far do we have to be to a bus stop?
Half a mile.
We put in more bus stops.
Yeah. So, um, so Doug, you're, you're a designer, right? And...
If we can, if we can be respectful of the answers, we definitely want to make sure that we're able to get clarification before we move on. Thank you.
Doug, you're, you're a designer, right? And, and all you architects are designers, so you guys get very creative. You know, we've seen a lot of your projects, and if you can, you can, can design your project to meet the codes, then of course, you know, it can be approved. So that's all I'll say.
Yeah, it, it sounds fine from what we're hearing here, but we'd have to see the plans.
Okay, we are going to move on to our next section, which we've heard this topic a couple of times tonight. So I, I know that it's already been discussed, but we're gonna hone in on it, which is the primary view determinations and the view impacts.
Okay. Just to tee it off, very cleanup language. This is, might not be a non-issue for, hopefully for most, but there's a larger issue about view determinations that we'll get into next. But we're proposing, so in Woolsey, they, the city council at the time established a moratorium on new primary view determinations, basically from the February 1st date when the code was adopted. So it's just a cleanup language, because when you read it, it's saying the same thing. So we're just making it clear that it's, from the date of the disaster is when these dates go into effect in terms of the moratorium. So that's the cleanup item. Now, I think the larger issue when it comes to views is, let me try to find it real quick, is this whole FEMA PVD issue. Or PVD or not PVD issue. So at the end of the day, there's gonna be some folks that are impacted on just the land side of, of PCH potentially by some of these beachfront FEMA increases. And so the question is, do we want to have protections for those residents across the street that may get impacted? And here's, here's a couple of their views to get an idea. So this would be whether they have a PVD, a primary view determination, or not. Do we want to establish some guidelines? What the staff has proposed tonight is that, to the maximum extent feasible, you should try to protect your neighbors' blue water views, and, and you shall seek increases in your floor area laterally before you're allowed to increase vertically. And what that looks like is this diagram here. We, we want you to try option one first, which is if you have the room to go laterally. Remember, you can't go further C-word unfortunately, but you can go closer to the street, closer to the sides if the fire department allows it. And so we would ask that you try to go lateral before you go vertical, which is option two in, in the red. So that's what's currently staff is proposing, to try to help protect some views.
All right, all. So, oh, hold on, if, sorry. If we're addressing the full group, it does have to have a microphone, so we can capture that. So I'm gonna ask, oh, right there.
Okay, I did a very unscientific study. I drove up PCH from Topanga all the way to Tremonto, which is essentially the area covered by the fire. I have it on my phone, I'm willing to show anybody. Essentially, 80% or more of the destroyed houses face nothing more than a mountainside. Nothing on the mountainside. The few burnouts on the mountainside are so elevated, they would not be affected by view obstruction. So we're gonna spend a lot of time to try to work out for that 10 or 20% where there may be three or four view blockage. I think it's a bad use of time, and I'd like to move on.
So just to be clear, the way it's worded in that case, if your, if your property abuts a mountain, you're good, because you don't, you don't block anyone's views. This is only, this is only if you block someone's view, would you need to consider this? But if you don't block anyone's view, do, do what you need to do. Not necessarily either, but we'll get there, we'll get there.
Okay, we're gonna go to our breakouts. Go ahead and move forward with this topic, and then we will report out.
Tyler. It's just an XL pile.
How about a wall needs to be a bonus, including garage habitable? That's what I'm saying.
All right, this is a five-minute warning, five-minute warning for this topic specifically. Want to make sure you are writing down your proposed recommendations. And we will hear those in about... Real quick for the room, it seems like some are thinking we're already ready and have a consensus. Can I get that from both tables or do we still need, are we good to go? Bless, that is wonderful. Okay, so we will start. I'm going to take the mic over here, start on this side of the room. I'm taking it, I'm going to Abe. For this table here to talk about. I don't see a no, so I'm going to...
I think in general, there was a lot of discussion around how PVDs sort of matter for the beach properties and how they interact with the 18-foot rule that's already there. There was discussion on how much of this actually impacts in practicality. The view in this table was really this isn't going to become as much of an issue as it appears on the surface. We had some practical discussions on the number of homes that these guys are designing and so on and so forth. Historically, beach homes on the land side have never had PVD. So why are we bothered about it now? Having said all that, the proposal that staff is putting on the table, exhaust the lateral expansion, score footage first, sounds like a good idea. Some on our table feel that it's a hoop that people have to jump through, but it's a suggestion, good Samaritan suggestion worth making. That's kind of that. Anything else?
Okay, I was going to say, who's the, who would like to talk? Luca?
So to catch up on or tag along with what you're saying, we had the same conversation, obviously, and we kind of thought that maybe one solution for the areas like in La Costa, for example, is to, is to have whatever elevation is required to meet FEMA on the beach side, then reflected on homes that would be impacted, views would be impacted on the land side. The terrain there is very steep, so the first row of houses would be impacted by the view and the second row would not be impacted by the first row coming up three, four, or five feet. Case by case, I guess, but... Oh, no, no, no issues with the day change and elimination, yeah. Bring it up to all fires and not just the Woolsey.
Great. Okay, I am going to turn it over for our virtual report out very quickly. Alex?
I'll be quick. Miriam, Sheri, Danny, Joan and Sheri, thanks for, thanks for talking. We had a pretty decent discussion, mostly considering to... For folks to be neighborly when they're considering their PVDs and when they're considering their rebuilds, to kind of be neighborly and be considerate of other folks', folks' views. And also, there is, there is some clarification or I think there was also some sort of consternation about, you know, what exactly everyone's current PVD allows for them and establishes for them in relation to the rebuilds that are happening around them. So maybe some clarification about if you have a PVD, what does that give you in relation to folks who are rebuilding around you? And how does that sort of protect your view for folks who are rebuilding?
Good, good, good question. Okay, so let's talk about non-beachfront and beachfront because it does matter for this issue. If you're not beachfront, and this is where the bulk comes into play. If you, you know, you can go up in height 10%, but if that 10% height increase pushes you over 18 feet, those new portions are considered new and those, if you have neighbors with primary view determinations within a thousand feet, they have some protection rights. So we may say, you know, you have to preserve their primary view, so you can't have that massing there, you have to move it over here outside of their blue water view. Now, that's for non-beachfront. For beachfront, you get a 24-flat roof and 28-foot pitch roof by right, essentially. There's even some carve-outs for a flat roof, you can have... Hopefully Craig Hill is not listening to me, but you can have, you can have a rooftop deck with railings up to 25 feet. And shout out Craig Hill, not, you know, he's my planning commissioner. So for beachfront, if you have a PVD, it does not matter because you can go up to 24 and 28. But this FEMA situation, depending on what you're calling it, is pushing people above 24 and 28. And so do we want some protections for that is, was the question?
Putting you on the microphone, also to clarify, there is, Seth is proposing some protection. There is a language, Tyler, if you want to put it back up to show what it was. And coastal did want to also have some protection language in there as well. But not so much for people's homes, but for views from PCH.
Yeah, for, for, for the, if you were, if you had to do a DMW, there is some, you have, you know, if you're impacting scenic resources, that has to be taken into consideration as well. Scenic resources, like a scenic road, like Pacific Coast Highway, it's trails, the beach, scenic areas.
To be clear, this is something that's not really going to apply to the beachfront that we're dealing with in the Palisades fire, but this is an amendment that's going to come through and apply throughout the city.
Yeah, so here's the language that the staff has proposed, let me try to zoom in. The city staff. And this is to help private residents, so not to do with public views. But, so replacement structures on beachfront lots are allowed to meet the minimum increases necessary to meet FEMA requirements, but shall to the maximum extent feasible protect neighboring blue water views. Those replacement structures shall seek increases in floor area laterally before they are allowed to increase vertically as viewed by neighboring properties. And again, what does that look like? Give me a sec here. So we're asking you to do the blue before you try to do the red, is basically what it is. So it's just, so all, all, all staff is saying is that you have to explore option one first, but if option one is just infeasible, then you get to do option two. That's all it is saying.
So just a quick reminder, we do have to capture this portion on the microphone. So I recognize that there's need for clarification. I see Luis, you've had your hand up for a bit. But just want to make sure that we're able to capture that with the microphone.
Just a quick question, is there an existing provision for rooftop decks? If there is a rooftop deck, is there provision for umbrellas? Meaning, can a person put an umbrella, but if they put the whole deck full of a lot of umbrellas, now you've got another roof above the roof and as far as view blockage?
Did you get your CDP approved in a recent planning commission hearing? Because we put conditions on that now that you can't have that type of furniture above the max height. Yes.
So we can take two questions, Luis and then gentleman here at the hat, and then we are going to have to move on to our next section.
Alexis, can I make a clarification?
One quick before Luis, there's a clarification from City Attorney.
So there, I understand there's a concern online about Tyler mentioned that you can go to 24, 28 feet by right. That does not mean somebody can do that with a fire rebuild. That's just, is a regular provision of our municipal code. You don't need a site plan review to go above 18 feet. You still need your regular coastal development permit. Everyone that's coming in under the exemption or under the governor's order can go up by 10%. That's it. So it doesn't mean you can zoom up to 28 feet. You would fall outside of the exemptions if you did that, if that's beyond 10%.
That was one of my questions, thank you. The second one, when you, Tyler, when you say increased by 10% of the height, is from the original height. That's what we have to clarify. In this case would be the, the green. So if the house started at 10 feet from an ABD and it was 30 feet, so you can go up to the 33, in this case it's 43. That's where we're locked in. And then if we have to go up by 10 feet, then that means that the maximum height with a PV is 23 feet.
It depends how you measure it. Depends how you measure it.
Let's say PCA matches FEMA lowest frame.
So, okay, so I don't know if we're going to get into, this is like a back and forth thing, but for a beachfront lot, you have to cut the building in half. You measure the, you measure the seaside half by the lowest finished floor and you measure the land side half by the mid-center line of the street. So in this exhibit, it's getting taller based on the center line of the street. So that side of the home is getting taller. If you design it the other way where only half of your structure goes up on that half, then you are technically in line with what you are saying. Luis?
So I do want to make sure that we're not too far into a back and forth. We have one question, then Councilmember Silverstein, I see your hand as well for a comment.
To clarify, if someone wants to maintain the original height, which was 30, they're going to have to go through the minimum waiver no matter what in this case, correct?
The way we, the way staff interprets it, yes, but the city council does not have to interpret it that way.
And then when are you going to make the PVDs public, the map?
Oh, that's a, we'll talk offline about that. Well, I just, yeah, that's a...
My question Tyler, my question Tyler is, from what I've read, you're penalizing virtually all of the beach because you're now saying to the extent they go above FEMA, they have to use their 10% for that rise. Virtually all of the houses will be above three feet, which is the maximum you'd get in 10%. And that's unfair. The fairness of this is you can replace like-for-like plus 10%. Now that you have to comply with FEMA, if in fact you do, why should you penalize? The second point before we answer that is, have you ever looked at what PCH looked like? It looked like grandma's teeth. What kind of view protection would you need? It was ugly.
So to defend myself real quick, that was the planning commission's recommendation that if you had to go that height, you, you're capped at the minimum requirement. So we just wrote it to match the planning commission's recommendation. And the city council can weigh if they want to give you an extra 10% or not.
Is this working?
Yes.
Okay. So Tyler has said now repeatedly, I think, that the city council is going to need to decide what the governor's order means with respect to this issue. I mean, I can speak for myself to give an example of what, what the conflict is. I read the governor's order to apply here, meaning if you are required to start your home 10 feet higher than you were, than it was situated before and you have a 28-foot home, you are now going to have a 28-foot home that is starting 10 feet higher. You're still going to get your full 28 feet. I don't know whether we're going to have agreement on the city council to that interpretation of the governor's order or not. Plus, you're entitled to another 10% under the governor's order. I don't know whether that's, whether that's a problem or not because that then gets you over 28 feet altogether. But you're not, you're not going to be penalized, as I see it, by the FEMA flood plane raising. The worst that's going to happen is you won't get your extra 10%. I don't know about that yet. But you're not going to, but you're not going to lose anything you had before. Your, your 28-foot home will still be a 28-foot home, starting from a different elevation, the way I look at it.
Thank you, Councilmember Silverstein. Mayor Protem Riggins, you have a comment. And then I will say, we do have to keep it moving and we're at homestretch, guys. One more section.
So my comment on that is similar to land side homes that are subject to TDSF. You can't exceed your TDSF with a natural disaster, correct? So if you're maxed out on your, your TDSF and your home burns down, you don't get an additional 10%, you can just build back.
10% has to comply, yeah.
So a home that existed at or above the city height wouldn't be able to extend the 10% because it exceeds already?
Should we, we're talking beachfront for FEMA?
Correct.
We do have that language that we proposed that would cover that. So you are allowed the minimum necessary for FEMA, even if it creates a non-conforming condition.
So let me clarify, so if you had a 30-foot home post, pre-fire and post-fire, you have to raise up to your new zero elevation per FEMA, you would still be entitled to the 30-foot home, but you would not be entitled to the 10% because that's going to exceed what is allowable by city code?
That's the way it's worded, yeah. Because your, because your 30 feet is over the 28 or 24 cap for beachfront.
So to clarify the, I guess there's two questions. If the house is already 28 feet, they can't get a 10% on it regardless of FEMA. If the original house was a beachfront 18 feet and they then raise it more than 10% in order to meet FEMA, their original house was 18 feet. Is, are we potentially considering giving them a 10% or, for council to decide?
Well, in that situation, 18, they could do the 10% because that would be 18 plus, let's say, a foot, almost two feet. So they can go up to 20 feet and because that's not triggering and beachfront's allowed to go up to 20 feet, they would be allowed to do that as a PV.
Okay, so, so I recognize that there might still need to be some clarification. We will have to take that sideline separately so we can move into our next and final section. Yes. I will triple-check that, but I do believe so. So next section, we have our rebuild standards for non-conforming structures and permitting process. So as we get, we're getting teed up here, there we are. Non, so if I could hold everyone's attention really quick so we can get through this next section again. And just a quick reminder, the city council did set some parameters on how long tonight will go. So we will adjourn at nine o'clock. So I just ask that we make the best use of our time for this next section. So again, non-conforming structures and the permitting process.
Okay, so non-conforming uses in structures. So this non-conforming structures is captured in seventeen, chapter 17, 60020. And that's, this is what allows you to do a planning verification for your 110% rebuild. Right now, right now it's limited to just Woolsey for the planning verification. And so we're proposing to give it to all natural disasters as a, as a planning verification. We're proposing to make it clear that you have six years to get your application submitted and you have eight years to get your building permits secured before you lose that non-conforming right. So to the example that Mary Ann mentioned with the 35-foot house, you would lose that right if you didn't get your application submitted within six years. You would lose that right if you did not get your building permit within eight years. The planning commission can grant three years' worth of extensions. And if you're a non-beachfront property, and as we mentioned before, if you have new height over 18 feet, it would need a site plan review. height over 18 feet, it would need a site plan review. So again, we mentioned this for the last section, but we're recommending to add this extra catch for, for FEMA, for the FEMA issue. Going into development permits, so right now, if we don't do anything to the code, all those accessory developments we mentioned, retaining walls, driveway improvements, those will need an administrative plan review, which I think a lot of you would understand that, that, you know, it can be cumbersome. So instead of having an administrative plan review process and a site plan review process for seawalls as required today, we created this rebuild development permit, which is just an expedited permit to get you all those, all the accessory structures you would need to support your rebuild in an expedited permitted fashion. So that, in a nutshell, that's all we did.
Thank you so much, Tyler. So please go through your work groups and we will reconvene. All right, everybody. We are going to get started on our reporting out for our last section. Well done, everyone. Made great use of our time. Well done, well done. We are going to start with our virtual report out first. So I will invite Alex up to the mic. I'm going to ask everyone to settle their conversations that are currently happening. And if we can draw our attention to this portion. I can have attention. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Appreciate us respecting each other. Alex, you're up.
Yeah. Thanks to everyone who was on the virtual for, for joining us today. I'm not going to name anyone specific because I'm forgetting their names now. But, but I just wanted, Danny had mentioned something about primary view determinations that I didn't mention before that I want to mention real quick, that he just wanted to give for food for thought, which was, you know, neighbors behind the houses which, which burned, which burned to allow, you know, kind of landslide neighbors to be able to, to, to build up to as much to, to also protect their views. So, you know, if there's a, you know, for Oceanside residences who are now building up or have to raise up their, their elevations due to FEMA, and that now affects folks on the land side, to allow the land side neighbors to, to also build up and so forth and so forth for neighbors behind them and so forth. So that's what Danny wanted to mention, and I apologize for not getting to that before. Related to the rebuild development permits, Marcy had a good question, which was, you know, for folks who have non-conforming structures that also have parts of their, parts of their, of their structure or their residence, or they have accessory structures that are not permitted or don't have the benefit of permit through no fault of their own, are they are they also allowed to be a part of this section? Is there any sort of differentiation between folks who have permits for non-conforming structures and folks who do not? So, I hope she was looking for some clarification, and also, obviously, you know, for folks in Big Rock who have a lot of structures kind of like that, kind of any assistance for those folks who are trying to rebuild but have parts of their structures that are not permitted by no fault of their own. So, that was Marcy's question. And then also, Miriam had a question about gas burning structures or structures that are using gas, kind of like an outdoor fireplace or things of that nature. Are they also allowed to rebuild? Are there any new sort of requirements that are forcing folks to rebuild differently for things that are gas pruning and stuff like that if they have to be switched over to electric, stuff like that? So, yeah.
Thank you, Alex, and thank you, members of the public. The legality issue, I'm looking at our city attorney right now, but what I can tell you what we did during Woolsey is, if you have that assessor record and that accounts for all your square footage, you're basically good. We've accepted those as evidence. If you have plans, that's even better. We've even, you know, piece by piece, you know, based on multiple pieces of evidence, photography, plans, assessor data, you know, old coastal commission records, kind of put together a house that way, too. So, you start with your assessor that doesn't cover it all, but then over time, you discover all these pieces of evidence. We, you know, we're open to it. It's not a hard science. So, that's all I wanna say, is we're gonna work with you to get everything you had back to the maximum extent feasible. Oh, and then, you don't wanna say anything on that? Okay. And then regarding the wood fireplace issue, I do believe, and maybe the architects can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you had a wood fireplace, I think per building code, you're not allowed to get that back. So, you would need to install, you know, current code, current building code requirements. Is that right? You still have to meet the building code. So, you can rebuild what you have, but you have to meet the building code.
Thank you, Tyler, and thank you, Alex. So, we are going to switch here to the middle table of the room. Not sure who will be reporting out for this one. Meeny, meeny, miny, moe.
Okay. My, my, something that Samantha and I were talking about a few weeks ago in Larrabee as well is existing non-permitted, if a house is built in 1910 and morphed over the years and turned into a mini Disneyland compound, and yet on the assessor's record, it shows 1,575 square feet when actual standing is maybe 3,300 square feet, and then the house substantially burned. But the bones are still there to where you can get the datum, the surveyor can come and say, okay, here's, this is here, 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 here. The question is, how are we defining existing non-permitted over 100 years of history versus existing non-conforming? I think we understand what that is. And then assessor record versus actual built and bank appraised square footage that they're lending on, securitizing that loan with. That was the thought on that.
Submit us what you got, and we'll see if it qualifies.
Okay, and so the other portion of it was that they request, we request that the RDP numbers for each individual application be kept, not bundled together, be kept separate, so that you don't have to go back. And after something's been approved, you don't have to go back to have it approved, right? I mean, and then the second one is some development standards for water tanks as well, and that type of water suppression, fire suppression.
Just, just.
Add ADUs to the, to this.
Add ADUs. Gotcha. So, for the water tank thing, we do have, it's not very, it's worded very broadly, but it's that section that says "new structures needing to meet applicable state and local laws." So, basically, if the fire department is requiring a water tank, it will be allowed under this RDP.
But you can't just get one just because you want one.
It needs to be required.
Needs to be required.
Okay, so over here, our last group to report out.
Just, okay, make a point first, or?
Go ahead.
Well, a couple of quick points, and then I had it over to Doug. But before that, I just wanna put in a plug-in for the process. Great stuff. And it would be so nice to have something similar for building and safety as well. That's what Doug and I were just talking about, but this is excellent. RDP for accessory structures, sounds great. We had no debates on our table, no dissenting viewpoints at all. Sounds very smart. Let's do it. We were talking about the ability to consider the substantial sort of comment that was there, substantially similar path, to address some of the non-conformities that are there, but of course, the overall discussion of non-conformities, you know, we were in agreement. That's that.
So, Tyler, you touched on a little bit with determining that baseline square footage of what to add the 10% to. And I'm sure everyone knows this, when they did the tax assessor numbers, it was the contractor always went in there, and he always gave the less number so he doesn't have to pay the bigger permit. So, that not necessarily means that your house is that big. It's usually a smaller number. But the onus is kind of on us. And then we're telling people, too, if you have pictures that like are either pre-cityhood or pre-coastal, that you say that was existing on that, and you figure out a way to measure, and you get close. And again, we just have to come up with enough information. It looks like, you know, it's not gonna go crazy, but we just have to look like, okay, that was actually there, and it was actually part of that structure when it was there. Whether it was bootlegged or not, I think there's a problem with that, and that was addressed. The other thing that we able to do, and correct me if I'm wrong on Woolsey, we were able to count covered porches in addition to the livable area and the garages to make a total structure size to create that to the 10%. I mean, we could clarify that, Tyler. I think it was we were allowed to do that. The next thing on the process, we were just talking about is the PV processes, where you're supposed to go and take this square footage and have this meeting. It's usually like in an hour, and you're saying, okay, this is the square footage that we can base this baseline. So, if you're, let's say, 3,200 feet, then we're gonna add 320, so that'll be our new structure, including the garage, including the covered porches. But we're saying is that the city needs to be, bring back something that the city did successfully for years, and they haven't for a while. It's the pre-app process. And we're saying is that you have a room, and I know we have our little building over there, and on one side of the table is the people that are, you know, making decisions from the health department to the geology to the wave-up rush, and this side of the table is our team. And we actually create the list. This is the FEMA, we agree to this. This is the height, we're agreeing to this. So, before we go off, then this is gonna speed up the process because we're agreeing to these points. And then we're gonna come back and say, hey, look at our drawings. They're at the same point that we agreed to two months ago, or whatever it was. So, anything to speed up the process, the pre-app process exists already in the city, and it's deemed, I guess, the wording that the planning director is the one who has to issue it. So, we're saying that that should be brought back, and it's a way to bring the team in beforehand. So, we go off and design, and then we'll talk about a little bit on the building and safety part, which is not tonight. But we think even you will even go to the plan check companies that the city already uses, because everyone's gonna be so bogged down. We should be able to go to Veritas or whatever, do our own plan check, and then come back, and it's already stamped and everything. But again, we're not doing this on our own. This is not self-certification. There's just a quicker way to do it. And the last thing is, including construction, we'll bring this up later, but we're saying that building inspectors are gonna get totally bogged down to try to inspect. It's hard enough to get them to come anyways to a job site. And owners should be able to allow to have deputy inspectors because they're certified by the state, and that'll really speed up construction. So, the idea is to start now and then get the persons back in their house as soon as possible. So, what we did tonight, and again, I just wanna say, this has been the most amazing night, and I think this has been both civil and amazing and constructive, and my hat's off to whoever had this idea. It was awesome. Thank you.
Team effort, team effort. So, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let staff answer some of those points and offer some clarification. We will have time for a couple of follow-up questions. We'll take one from each table, and then I believe we also have a raised hand virtually. But go ahead, Tyler.
Sure. Real quick on the covered porch issue, yeah, you know, because we count TDSF differently than the assessor may have counted livable area. So, again, we'll work with you. Show us what you got. And there are situations where you, you know, like I said, it's a piece by piece. If you show us evidence, you had like a sunroom or something, people have gotten credit for that in the past. In terms of, in terms of the pre-application process, I think what Doug is asking for, because we currently have a pre-design meeting process, which is very similar, you just don't get nothing in writing anymore, right? I think that's what you want, is you want something in writing so you can hold us to it down the line, and I understand. But that's really what the difference is. What I can tell you about the rebuild center that's opening on Monday is that, that's what it is. It's a one-stop shop. You're gonna have all the departments there, including the fire department, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And so, if you need a full encompassed appointment with all the departments, that's gonna be available for you at the rebuild center.
Okay, I know I already had one raised hand here. Maybe, kind of, sort of. There we go. Luis, please go ahead.
I go? Okay. And so for the, it's like the like-for-like definition. For the TDSF, the way we define TDSF, it includes the thickness of the stair walls. The county tax assessor doesn't. So, we should be able to redraw what the tax assessor's diagram with dimensions, and then we add a standard six inch. That will give us extra 3% of square footage. And if we have photos of any overhang that is impermeable, that extends beyond six feet, that should also count in favor of the TDSF, because you guys are gonna punish us with that. So, that's something that I would be nice to have it memorized. And then just a clear definition of what like-for-like is for Joe.
Okay. Do we have any other points for, I see Luca, you had your hand up also here.
It'd be useful at these, at these pre-design meetings, or however we wanna call them, there was actually a way in between having like an actual official response with the have, you know, kind of like the PV format. There's sheets with signatures and boxes to be crossed. One is for fire, one is for environmental health, one is for this. You talk to everyone, you cross the box, and there's an answer next to it. Square footage X, height X, size of septic X, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That would give us a good start.
All right, thank you. But just real quick, I do wanna offer, because we've been at this table, is there, are there any points of clarification at our other table in the room here? No? Great. Okay. Mike can go back to whose hand it was in. Thank you.
Two points. One, Doug, I think your idea of a deputy inspector's brilliant, absolutely brilliant. The second one is in plan check, there is an inefficiency in the way plan check goes. I submit my plans, plan checker looks at it, sends it out to be reviewed, comes back, sits on his desk. If we could shortcut that and have the architect or engineer involved directly with the subcontractor, even if it's a burden on the homeowner to pay him, that can cut months off of a tedious project, tedious work, and also lighten the city's load. The city will always have final review, so they're not losing anything. And we as building, we can save an enormous amount of time.
Thank you so much, everyone. That is our, oh, I have a, we have a couple, I have a mayor pro tem riggins, and we are going to adjourn back to our special meeting format just to, and we'll go back up on the dais.
Just a clarifying question. Are we planning on having building plan check staff at the rebuild center?
Yes, absolutely.
To Arnold's point, there will be actual plan checkers in-house at the rebuild center. There will be actual building plan check reviewers at the rebuild center.
We're getting questions. Do we have an appointment scheduler set up yet, or will that be announced?
So, there will be an appointment scheduler that goes live once with the same as the office being open on Monday. So, all of that will be available. You can schedule it virtually. You can also call in. It's whatever your preference. We wanna be accessible. But yes, we have that. So, I am going to, just real quick, because we're getting way too far into this part of the rebuild, but I do wanna answer your question and provide some additional clarification as to how that will operate. I know we talked a little bit about it at the special meeting, but I will be able to shed some more light on it. We are wrapping up. Everyone, thank you so much. And to those that are maybe tuning in and aren't here any longer in person, and those that were virtual, we are now going to ask our council to go back up on the dais. We are going to resume the special meeting that we adjourned down to the work session. Nobody run off. But thank you all so much for participating in this portion of the night.
Yeah. I thought there was an earliest time that it could start.
Are they ready?
Are you, are you ready? Okay. All right. We've got an ordinance and public hearing now back in session, and I'm not sure exactly what the right phrasing is to bring this back up here. And Tyler, do you have some information for us out of this meeting, or how do we wanna do that?
Well, what I'll do is I'll prepare a summary of what I believe or what we all believe were the main points taken. There was a lot of things said, so it's not gonna be everything that was said individually, but.
Okay. So, do we have anything we need to do tonight except to establish a new time for tomorrow and?
Did you need feedback about anything to draft for tomorrow?
Oh, sure. So, this is what we gathered was the consensus for the different topics. We saw for temporary homes, it was that 1,200 square feet is preferred. Does that sound right?
My understanding is that what we did tonight was we got the consensus from the community that showed up as to what they wanted. We haven't even begun to deliberate, we still need to get public comment and then we'll talk about it. So, I don't know that we're in a position to give direction of any sort.
Well, I guess it's not asking for direction, but that you guys agree that that was one of the general consensuses that people requested? I don't know, Trevor, maybe we can...
Bruce, I think it would be appropriate to try and get some quick feedback from the staff as to what they heard and then maybe get any public comment if we have any left and then to establish where we want to operate tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. The only point is, I don't think this should be phrased as we have a consensus that these are, that we have a kind of an agreement of any sort on anything.
How about the community expressed?
Yes. What the community wants.
I think Tyler's just saying, he was, I'll bring back language with these options. He's just going to go through the list of, I'm going to bring up language that would deal with these options and if that's incorrect and that's not something you want brought back, you can not otherwise.
All right, and I want to make sure we haven't left anything off that he's got on his list. If anybody has some items that might warrant our consideration. We're not trying to solve these tonight, it's just to make sure we've got the list.
Staff just wants to be prepared with enough language or information so that tomorrow a decision could be made.
Is everybody okay with just getting a data dump here and make sure we've got everything on the list? All right, Tyler, go ahead, please.
Oh, yeah, the first issue was 1,200 square feet for temporary homes. Another thing about temporary homes was that changing who can occupy it to anyone who was, you know, who was affected by a natural disaster, but had to be someone in Malibu, a resident of Malibu is what we think we heard. Moving on to CDP exemptions, potentially getting rid of bulk. For ADUs, perhaps making them, instead of an APR, making them an RDP, potentially removing the 20-foot wide requirement, but specifically for the natural disaster affected people. And that's all I had.
Anything about the septic system, trying to clarify that or is that something that'll be operational as opposed on this? Because we had a lot of comments about that in the Zoom.
If I may just chime in here, Mayor and members of the council, we have, you know, we're going through a high-level surface of some of the things, but we do still need to go back and look at the footage and pull everything in because, and that's why it was so important. Thank you to everyone that worked through the workshop. There's certain things and nuances we want to make sure that we're able to pull and summarize for the council to review.
Okay.
As the community consensus. So, if we can ask for a little bit of time, obviously this is dependent on when you adjourn the meeting to, but we want to make sure that we are able to provide a summary of all items discussed.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we haven't missed anything or anybody has any other comments for it to be considered on that list.
Well, I mean, do we have clarification on beachfront homes regarding the FEMA elevation? Is it clear where the community is on that? Or do you have any questions about that?
It seemed like they were okay with the language I proposed as a planning verification to somewhat try to protect views where possible. But I think the larger issue of the, how to count FEMA, whether it's part of the governor's order or not, is up for discussion when we come back to you.
And the recommended finished floor, if that establishes a new zero point for the structure height?
That's just like when we discuss at our regular council meeting, that's the topic that's going to be up for discussion.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. I believe we probably do not want to get into item 3A, that's the actual consideration of the ordinance, is that correct?
Yeah, at this point, we said it was six hours and we're about 16 minutes away from that. So, if you want to adjourn the meeting and the item to, to tomorrow, a specific date and time at this location.
Bruce, do you have a comment?
Yeah, so, I mean, we talked about the possibility of we would reconvene the second day, the next day, that would be tomorrow, and begin to take public comment because it's a public hearing. And we didn't know how many people are likely to give public comment, how long that will take. So, we were keeping the option open for a third day in the event that that lasted for six or seven hours. I suspect, but, you know, I don't know what other people think, that after today, we're not likely to get that same kind of exhaustive public comment that we would have gotten had we not done this. And I'm just wondering if it wouldn't help the staff to have 24 hours to go over what happened today and present to us on Thursday as opposed to tomorrow before we make a decision as to when we're going to come back.
But as we open that up, what's our deadline to get this puppy done?
Thursday and they need, they have to get it in by Friday, right?
So, I will say, and for continuity's sake and for our city attorney's participation, but we would rather have sooner rather than later, if that's okay with the council, to be Wednesday, if tomorrow is an option.
I only raised it to give you time.
Appreciate it.
Joe?
I was going to echo that sentiment, but I think the question to staff then is how much time do we need tomorrow then to compile and make sure we captured everything?
The people online realize that there's kibbishing going on to figure out what time this will be.
Kibbishing, huh?
Kibbishing, you know what I'm saying? I'm bilingual.
That's not going to be on our definition, Liz.
That's right.
What we had today would be preferred or ideal, meaning no earlier than 3:00 PM tomorrow.
Okay, let's put a proposal then for 3:00 PM if that works for everybody.
Do you want to motion? How do we do that?
I just want to give kind of a nod.
Works for me.
I wonder if we could take though a half-hour dinner break at some point tomorrow? Like around 6:30?
So, if we plan to start at 3, if we look as though we're going to go past 6:30, then we plan for a half-hour break and not to exceed 9:00 PM or?
Yeah, maybe my imagination isn't broad enough, but it's unimaginable to me that we're going to be done by 6:30.
We bought dinner. All right, let's do it at 3 o'clock if that works for everybody. Can we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for, read.
To motion to adjourn this.
To adjourn until 3:00 PM tomorrow?
To adjourn this meeting and the remaining items to 3:00 PM tomorrow in this room.
In this room, all right?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion is approved. We'll see you all tomorrow at 3:00. And by the way.
I just wanted to, yeah, thank everybody for like being super respectful, kind, prepared. I appreciate the staff, you guys all, it went well.
And I want to say one thing, Alexis, Tyler, and the rest of you guys, outstanding work and just couldn't be better. All right.